Good evening. It's 5:30 PM on Wednesday, July 9, 2025, and this special meeting of the Sandpoint City Council is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall 1123 West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I am Mayor Jeremy Grimm, presiding, also President or City Council President Deb Rule, Councilors Joe Espiro, Justin Dick, Kyle Schreiber, Pam Duquette, and Rick Howard. Under the city's adopted Code of Ethics and Civility as the presiding officer, I'm going to identify law enforcement personnel serving as Sergeant at Arms for this evening's meeting. Tonight, we have Police Sergeant Michael Aaron in the back. Thank you. If everyone please stand, we'll recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please note that we'll be scheduling a hearing to take public testimony on August 20 regarding the upcoming year's budget. This evening, the council will have an opportunity to review those items and discuss with staff, and because a specific public hearing in this regard is required by state code, we will not be taking public comment on the budget or any components of the budget this evening, but we'll look forward to hearing from the public as a body during the official public hearing. In the meantime, following the information provided this evening, members of the public are more than welcome to reach out to me or to council members with suggestions or concerns between now and council's consideration of approval on August 20. Next, we'll move on to announcements. Do council members have any general announcements or reports at this time?
Yes, Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Dick.
Good. The Arts, Culture, and Historic Preservation Commission met yesterday, as a matter of fact. A couple of things we've seen, I think if you've walked around downtown, you've noticed we've got our new silver box artists and artwork are up and going. They look great. I saw Ellie out there this morning. One change from that due to the evening that we did not have a quorum, one of our third selections was not able to get their artwork, which has actually worked out pretty well because Dave Gonzo, a local artist who was our backup plan, got to get his work in too. So I thought that looked great. Congratulations to everybody. Those should be up for basically a year from today. The Big Belly Can Wrap selection planning, you guys will start to see here, we're going to wrap those trash cans, the Big Belly trash cans with our couple of winters that we selected about a month or two ago, and we're going to start preparing on what we're going to do for the next time around and what that selection criteria might be. And I think you made a comment as well. Do we own those trash cans now?
We do.
Excellent. So that might give us a little more flexibility on how we involve those with community and public art. The summer walking tour, the planning is in full effect on Friday, July 22, I believe. Sorry, I've got a lot of chicken scratch notes here.
Believe you're correct.
Is it the 25th? Sorry, the 25th will kick off the walking tour, and then we will have another one followed up a couple of weeks after in August. The, let's see, the historic walking tour brochure, Ellie and the rest of the crew has been pretty busy here, so we are still a couple of weeks on getting that out, but that should be here, hopefully by the end of the month. And we had a brief discussion about the citywide seasonal banners. The mayor and the rest of the group kicked around, potentially putting some seasonal banners up throughout town. We've done it before many years ago, so we're just starting to investigate that process and see how we can bring together the art community to work on it. I think that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilor Dick. Any other council announcements or reports?
I do have-
Head Councilwoman Duquette.
Mr. Mayor Sustainability Committee meeting minutes. We met on June 24, new time, 2:30. Let's see, everybody was there except for one person, which was good. We had a couple on Zoom. Let me see, I just got these. Presentation by Alex Angerman with the Kootenai Tribe Organics Program, who I had brought here earlier, shared with the Sustainability Committee about the composting project, the initiative, and everybody was pretty excited, had all sorts of questions and comments and potential future use. So that was a good introduction, I think. We continued the discussion on the comprehensive plan chapters, tried to get guidance on how to best look at those comments that we had pulled out of the goals. I shared a letter from the mayor about his goals with the committee members. We talked about those for a while. We discussed upcoming projects within the city and the proposed parking ordinance, the relevancy of idea of a proposed sustainability checklist. I also shared a list of cities, other cities like ours, who have sustainability plans, hoping that we'll be able to check those out. It was Mr. Benner's and Ms. Pele's last meeting as their terms on the committee had come to an end, so we're looking for more committee members.
I think we've got one.
Michaela? Awesome. We could still use-
More.
-another city person, right? So, city people. My friends are tired of listening to me. Ask if they'll do it.
Need to find new friends.
Maybe.
Any other council reports or announcements?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Schreiber.
Yeah, the Urban Forestry Commission met on June 26, and we continued the discussion of the definition for heritage and other valuable trees in Sandpoint with a special guest appearance by Ellie Sussness from the Arts, Culture, and Historic Preservation Commission. And then we also continued our discussion of updating the arboreticultural manual-
Gotta write this down, yes.
-with no recommendations made yet, so that's all.
May I ask a question? Are we redoing the street trees? What's appropriate or what's allowable to put on the right of way?
Yes, that will be part of the arboreticultural manual.
Okay, so if somebody wanted to, I won't even try. If somebody wanted to put trees, should we wait until that? I've had people ask me, and I've had to cut down a couple of dead ones that I'm curious to just wait.
I would direct those people to Eric Bush, our city forester.
Thank you, Councilman Schreiber. Any other council reports or announcements?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Espiro.
Hey, we had our Parks and Rec Commission meeting, and Mr. Walker gave us updates on Traverse Park in particular and path moving forward, and so not too much on there, nothing new anyways, and also potential art collaboration with locals for painting basketball courts downtown City Beach or Pine Street if those got redone. So just different ideas like that, too. So we're just going to get some more input from the basketball community. So I give my input, and yeah, it'll be interesting. So we decided not to touch tennis courts, so.
Thank you, Councilman Espiro. Any other council reports?
Yeah, I would like to say something if I can, Mr. Mayor. Just, I want to formally thank council members, coworkers, you, Mr. Mayor, for all your support. On June 22, I lost my mother, and she will be missed, but the support from the community and all of you guys is priceless. So I want to thank you all and appreciate you.
Thank you. Joel, we're all here for you. We need us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other council announcements or reports? I'll just make a brief announcement. It's a busy time of the year. We have just event and gathering after event and gathering, whether it's the No Kings, or the Pride, or the Boat Show, or other things. I'm just want to say thanks to the public for your patience during these events. It does make downtown and our town very busy. It adds to the life and vibrancy of our community, and I couldn't be more proud of our community to exemplify a place where people with different opinions and perspectives can gather and share those and have discussions without bad things happening. So just, it's a busy time. Long Bridge Swim, Poak, Wooden Boat Show, and more coming up. So this is a long and difficult time for our staff. There's a lot of pressure put on fire and police and the office for planning these festivals as well, I should add that. So enjoy it. It's a special time of the year, and keep up the tolerance and patience with our visitors and those who are coming to explore and enjoy our community. Next, any announcements from the, from staff? We're just going to jump. I've been running around today, so I won't give a comprehensive announcements. We're going to walk through sort of all the priorities in the budget. Any directors want to brief council on anything? Thanks, Director Walker.
Good evening, council. Good to see those of you who have a few weeks. Welcome back. I'll just share a few updates with you since the mayor didn't have statements prepared tonight. Let's start with parks. There's still a lot of activity going on in the parks, projects over Traverse in particular. Since our last meeting, Woods has come in and resurfaced a bunch of the asphalt that had kind of crumbled and settled over the winter. That was all under warranty, so no cost to the city. We're, I can't believe I'm saying this, we're still going through those final punch list items at the Sports Center. Jeno's still there dealing with today. The issue was tension in the cables that support the ceiling fans. They needed to be fine tuned so that those didn't wobble, on which we had been noticing lately. Maeve is continuing to work on some exciting improvements to Traverse Park this year, including a picnic shelter. We made huge progress just in the last few days, getting a local timber frame contractor who's agreeing to support that rotary project. That's a Rotary Club funded project along with Parks Capital Improvement Funds. We've also got support from a local roofing company that's donating all the labor for a metal roof to go on our timber framed picnic shelter, 24 by 36. It's going to be a very large picnic shelter, very exciting, about six tables or picnic tables are going to fit underneath that along with a barbecue pit next to it. Landscaping around the skate park is progressing. I believe we laid sod today on the east side of the skate park. We definitely got it graded and put soil down. So we're going to be, that's irrigation has been improved there. Sod, that's going to be a nice grassy area. We determined to go with grass over asphalt after surveying Waldorf students and skaters. Both groups preferred having a grassy area next to the skate park rather than more asphalt. So that's cool. Batting cages are on their way. We ended up ordering some full-size 70-foot batting cages at the request of the local baseball community. They previously had 50-foot batting cages there, which were only good for Little League. So the batting cages are on their way. Thompson Fence completed the baseball safety net pole installation, and nets have now been ordered to go on those as well. So Thompson Fence will be back to put the footers in for the baseball batting cages that are going north of the Russell Building. So that's kind of what we're working on. Finally, a shade structure at the skate park. The concept we're going for there is to provide shade on the southwest side of the skate park. This will be a sleeve-type structure that can be removed in winter and stowed away by the Parks Crew to avoid damage from winter conditions. So those are kind of the final Parks projects that we're wrapping up this summer.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilwoman Duquette.
So new baseball nets, and also I've been walking past the park bunch. I've noticed that the current nets at Memorial, at one point, we had some birds, osprey, get tangled in those nets, and we put some streamers in, and I've noticed that those are no longer present. Yeah, I think they probably wore out or came off. So just putting that on your radar if we put more nets over there, and then maybe you want to check those down at Memorial, make sure we're not having. I don't think the osprey is there this year if I-
Yeah, they are.
They are there this year. Okay, all right. I haven't checked the camp, so.
Yeah, good reminder. Since our meeting two weeks ago, Ryan Wells has been implementing some of the guidance that you provided. We have yet to have a follow-up meeting with USTAPNW, but he has made progress on a volunteer program. We plan to have that rolled out later this summer, which will reduce our staffing needs by 20 hours per week, saving around $2,000 a month in payroll. That's exactly what this council advised, was look for ways to save money on payroll, but also extending our operating hours by about 20 hours per week. So the concept, I'll be happy to go over with anyone who's interested, working with Cheryl on how to implement like a volunteer contract. The volunteers can sign the benefit for volunteers being they get a free membership. So really exciting. Ryan's doing a fantastic job over there. Yeah, that's about it for Parks and Rec. We've got a lot of stuff going on, planning, I think, two or three public hearings next Tuesday at the Planning Commission level. Some things are coming to you in the next couple of months as well. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Go ahead, Councilman Schreiber.
Yeah, I was up in the little Sand Creek watershed recently, and I noticed there are some new trails that have gone in, but I wasn't able to locate those trails on the management plan.
I'd be happy to show you. We've got, there's two new trails that have been built this year that are trails that were included in the Trail Master Plan adopted in 2023.
Okay.
So I think there's segments 201 and 202 maybe, but I'd have to look.
Okay.
So I could show you those if you want to see.
Thanks.
Cool.
Any other questions for Director Walker?
Thank you.
Awesome. And it's like Holly's going to come up for a brief update. Holly Ellis, Public Works Director.
Good evening. Two brief updates on the wastewater treatment plant. We are picking up the bond effort, so we engaged some PR and financial bond counsel to help support us. For the public, we will be sending out a survey in the next two weeks or so to the community. It'll run for about two weeks via text message. More details to come. The purpose of the survey is to check the pulse of the community on where they are with the bond election for the wastewater treatment plant. So it'll give us an understanding of where folks are to date and then where we need to get to in the next couple of months to get us to a bond election this fall to reconstruct the wastewater treatment plant. The second update I have for you is at the Boyer Culvert. So as a reminder, the culvert at the city boundary, where the city meets Bonner County off of Boyer Avenue, we have a culvert that is near collapsing, so we close the road and we have a detour over to 95 via Schweitzer Cut Off in Bronx. We had survey out there this week. We have our size for our culvert, so our next steps are to procure the culvert. And the next week, we'll have a meeting with JEB engineers and our contractor to come up and finalize our schedule for the project. So that is moving and progressing. You will see surveys, surveyors out there. They've been out earlier this week, and you'll see them out there for the next couple of weeks.
Thanks, Holly. Any questions for Holly? Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, do you share? The survey is going to be on text, on a phone?
It'll be distributed via text. I'll have more details to share, but that's platform is sending texts out to those who are in the community.
Yeah, I don't do things on my phone like that. Would I get the survey?
So the purpose of, that's a great question, and I'll ask our consultant to get more-
I mean, I can get them, but I don't.
Respond to them typically.
Yes.
I'll ask that question. I'll see if we can get a-
I'm sure I'm not alone.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Dick.
Holly, what is being done for the communication with the neighbors while we're working on the Boyer Culvert, Schweitzer tourism traffic patterns? How are we getting the word out or our community partners getting the word out with that?
We have it, it's on our website. It's on our news page. That's one place that people can find that information. My understanding is that Bonner County also has it on their website. When we closed the road, we were in contact with the folks who run Schweitzer Mountain, and I'm not sure how they opted to let their visitors know about that work, but those are the efforts that we've done to date.
As well as PR, of course, and notification. And we were just talking about this this morning. Surprisingly, I believe Holly's only received one call in two and a half weeks on this, or three weeks, whatever it's been. So people seem to be adapting pretty well.
Thank you.
I'm sure the county might be getting a few more calls, being that it's right on the edge of our-
Well, I'd run into Tom Chastie, and I was expecting an earful one way or another, and he kind of said, we'll work around it however we need to work around it, but we got to make sure the communication is there.
Yeah, it looks like we are aiming for, you know, hopefully early September opening, but Holly's scrambling right now, so.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Holly. Eric, did you want to give a brief update on the trapping?
Yes. Good evening, council. Eric Bush, city forester, project manager. Last November, November 6, city council meeting, I provided an update on the identification and future trapping of the spongy moth that kills oak trees or can kill oak trees, defoliates them and other species as well. I've been working with Idaho Department of Lands throughout the spring to get proper locations for those and figure out all the details. They've been doing most of the legwork, but I've been helping them out from the local perspective. They're beginning trapping this week, so we've got some information on our website. I'm just going to share my screen here briefly. We've got some information that, if it goes, there we go. On the city of Sandpoint website, under Urban Forestry, you can, if you click the dropdown here, there's a spongy moth FAQs that you can get to right there, but primarily I just wanted to draw attention to the trap itself. Idaho Department of Lands is deploying between 200 and 300 traps throughout town and also in the county on the kind of western edge of city limits. We're hoping that folks don't remove these, damage them, deface them, anything like that. It's really important that IDL is able to track this at various locations throughout the city. I will scroll down a little bit on this website here or on this page here. This is kind of the grid that they are trapping, and these aren't trap locations. It's just the grid of where they're, where they were kind of laying out their traps. So we, you can see that it kind of extends west outside of city limits into the county. Fingers crossed, we find out that the one specimen they found last year was just a kind of a one-off that was a hitchhiker from somebody's vehicle or something else. And we don't have an outbreak, but we'll know in approximately October, November. These traps will be up for the remainder of the summer, and they will pick them up in the fall and see what they find out in traps. And let's all cross our fingers, we don't have any other species. We don't really want to deal with an outbreak in this context. So that's all I've got. Anyone have any questions?
Thanks, Eric.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilwoman Duquette.
Last time that was brought up, I believe Councilwoman Rule and myself said we would be locations for traps. Is that-
I asked the Idaho Department of Lands, spoke that, and they had actually already identified locations there, so we're all set. They, I've been working with them throughout the spring. So if anything changes or anything, I'll certainly let you guys know, but I appreciate it.
Thanks, Eric. Appreciate it. Fingers crossed. Right, I think that's probably it for department announcements. Next, public comment period. We'll proceed with the general public comment portion of the meeting. If you wish to speak and haven't yet completed a sign-up form, please do so and hand it to a staff member at the back of the room. The purpose of the general comment time is to allow members of the public in attendance to speak to the mayor and council regarding items included on this evening's agenda under the consent calendar or older new business that is not a hearing. For purposes of a general public forum, you are also welcome to comment on any topic pertinent to the business of the city that is not included on the agenda and not anticipated or scheduled for further public hearing. Please note that the council cannot take testimony on any planning or land use related matter outside of an official public hearing. I'd like to make everyone aware that the city does have a policy on public meeting decor. The rules are posted just outside the chamber's entry doors. In summary, I would ask that everyone please be pleasant and respectful, not make derogatory statements about others, including city staff, not be disorderly and disruptive, no calling out, clapping, or holding up signs. Public comment time is for comments only, no questions or debate. You are welcome to contact me during regular business hours if you have any questions or concerns. This is the only general public comment time that will be offered this evening. Those attending remotely who wish to speak may raise their hand on Zoom at this time. When it's your turn to speak, please state your name and whether you reside in Sandpoint city limits. Each speaker will have up to three minutes. And with that, Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak during the general public comment time?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Carrie Logan.
Mayor Logan, nice to see you.
Thank you, Mayor Grimm. Good evening. My name is Carrie Logan, and I live in the corporate limits of Sandpoint. My comments this evening are on trees, sidewalks, and wages. I don't see where tree plantings are included in the budget. They are vital to stormwater management, pavement life, and quality of life. It is disingenuous to claim we are a tree city when the only way we meet the threshold is by virtue of salary funding for the city forester who basically cuts down trees. I don't know the projected amount of RCT funding, but I see no designation of RCT monies for sidewalks and bike paths. There is a paltry $95,000 in general funds for sidewalks and bike paths. I encourage you to change that distribution so some RCT monies go to sidewalks and paths. Last, I do not feel any upper administration position should receive any kind of cost of living or position adjustment. In my opinion, they are way overpaid. I do support cost of living for line workers. I also support an increase in council payment to $12,500 if council feels that their attention to detail and the business of the city warrants it. I definitely support a wage increase in the mayor's position because he has proven, he has proven dedication and responsibility to conducting the business of the city in an exemplary way. $50,000 annually sounds right to me. These amounts also establish what I think is a reasonable financial relationship of the required work and responsibility between council and mayor. To accomplish these changes, it's necessary to put off adoption of the preliminary budget to your next meeting so that Sarah can work numbers around if you happen to agree. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Logan. Any other public comments?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Appreciate the public comments. That will conclude the general public comment portion of the meeting. Next on the calendar is the consent calendar, and I just want to point out in the audience tonight, we do have Catherine Stapleton, no relation to Jennifer Stapleton, and we are privileged to have someone with Catherine's background, knowledge, and expertise offered to volunteer her time to the Bike Ped Committee. So thank you for being here and your volunteerism. For the record, the total amount of bills for the approval is $1,375,739.38, reflecting $608,072.31 for regular payables and $767,667.07 for payroll. Council, are there any questions or items you wish to remove from the consent calendar? I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
They're moved. Second.
Moved by Schreiber, second by Dick. This will be a roll call vote.
For Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Counselor Sproul?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to new business, with no old business on the agenda, which is great to have moved through all that. Thanks for your patience. We will move on to the first item under new business, which is the review and approval of the fiscal year 2026 preliminary budget and the scheduling of the annual budget public hearing. Sarah will be joining us in leading this discussion, and I think she'll explain that at this point, we are establishing, looking for approval of the preliminary budget, which is the highest the budget can be. It can move down at that point once adopted. And the real intent of tonight and our next meeting is to give you background and sort of perspective on the particular line items and projects and the revenues at the next meeting, and then open it up for you to do as you will, once we get to that public hearing and adjust any way you feel appropriate. So with that, Sarah, Sarah's done a ton of hard work, super impressed and just honored to work with someone of Sarah's caliber who makes this look easy, and I know it's not. So with that, Sarah, please take it away.
Good evening, council and mayor. Tonight, we are here to discuss a tentative approval of the revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year 26 budget for the public hearing. I have a presentation that I have prepared for you guys. It is a high level, and the idea is to go through this and then also have you guys discuss and deliberate on that topic, and then go through the CIP, capital improvement projects, as well as some of the O and M department budgets.
Melissa, could you scoot Sarah down a little bit and-
No, sorry.
Increase, oh, no problem. You're handling like five different things at once, so. Beautiful. Thank you so much.
All right. First, I wanted to go through the accomplishments that the city has accomplished, and this is also found in the transmittal letter or the mayor's letter to the public about the budget. We have adoption of the comprehensive plan, revisions to our city website, and in fact, it's actually a brand-new platform with notifications and engagement tools, the updates to the development impact fees that will be coming in front of you guys next week for the adoption of that, the negotiation of the city area of impact boundaries, initiation of replacement of the wastewater treatment plant, legal review for water utility services outside the city limits, and reevaluation of the city park system, including staffing structure and facility- and reevaluation of the city park system, including staffing structure and facilities. Completed the job classification and compensation study, and that has been wrapped into the budget that will be, that is in front of you. The activation of the city, a citizen advisory boards and decoupling from the fire JPA and an ABLA and a more focused service delivery model for our fire department. Implementation of revised organizational structure, completion of the emergency response and disaster prepared, preparedness plan. Initiated the phase three, final phase of the downtown revitalization project, and you'll find that also in the budget tonight of the construction. And then added to the economic diversification of the economy by supporting the expansion of aerospace-related businesses. I'm sure there's more, but these are just the highlights of that. Do you want to add anything?
No, I just, I thank the council and staff. None of this could have happened without your support, and I hope the public finds progress pleasing. And we will continue on trying to focus on critical infrastructure and the residents of Sandpoint.
All right. The budget process itself starts back in February and it goes all the way through August. So with the final adoption of the budget, we have prepared the budget under the organizational chart in front of you. This is also found within the, the budget book itself as well. This is going back to the city department structure and with seven department heads. Six department heads, sorry.
And an attorney, yep.
This is, these are lots of numbers in front of you. This is just basically comparing the budget trending by fund type over the years, over the last five years. The, what I wanted to point out is that in, in 24, five, between four and five is when the JPA went away. So that actually general fund budget has decreased over that time. Again, we can get into more detail. This is just a high level. Government funding budget trending, this lays out all of the, the general fund and then also the special revenue funds. And in here, you can really see the park improvement fund where it, for the build out of the JER center. That's the green one in the middle there. And that was a carryover from the 23 to 24 budget. But overall, the amount has decreased. The proprietary funds, budget trending as well, and this is the bond, the wastewater, the water and sanitation funds. You can see the ramping up in the, especially the wastewater fund for the construction project for the wastewater. That is contingent, obviously, on the bonding and, and as preliminary engineering. I wanted to touch a little bit on salary and benefit trending. In the past, we've done this at a department level, but I did it at a citywide level. I think it's super important to show this because medical and dental has substantially increased over the last several years. And it really makes a big difference in the budget, and it's not just a salary part, it's the benefits as well. I did want to point out in the 24 to 25, this is the, the decrease is the firefighters for the 17 that actually from the JPA. So that's why there's a large decrease. And this is actually a average employee cost and medical dental costs, and it's showing how much they've increased over the years and really pointing out the medical and dental per employee, especially in the last two years. We've seen astronomical increases in those areas. And really, the, especially the last two years, you can see the majority of the cost per employee increase is related to those medical costs. We'll cover these tonight a little later, but I just wanted to give a snapshot in front of you as well. I did printouts for you of the, of this, just the one page for the capital improvement plans. And you can write notes or anything like that on it. But we go through the streets, the engineering, water, wastewater, and parks projects. We'll go in those in detail tonight. And this is just a capital improvement plan year over year, how it's changed over the years. And you can see again, the JER, I think it's kind of gray, light gray somewhere in the middle there on the 23 and 24. A big chunk of that is the JER building. And then you can see the, the engineering projects for that purple on the second one up is for the Great Northern and the downtown projects. You can see those increasing, and then also the wastewater projects again, that is increasing on the orange. And then this is going through the, what we are going to cover tonight. Besides the CIP, the different departments, the fire department, we'll go through central services, the finance department, public works department, the streets part of the public works department, and then just the building and planning of the community planning and development department. And then this is the August 6th, what we have planned on the agenda is going through a citywide revenue sources. We haven't hit on that as, as in details for years. And so I figured that this year would be a really good time to deep dive into that because really a budget, a governmental budget starts with revenues. We are limited on what we have for revenues and the sources they come from. Unlike the private bit industry where you can go, as we talked this morning, make more widgets to make more revenue. Here, we don't have that luxury. Yes, we can get grants, we can get other things, but really our funding sources are very, very set. And so you start, at least my process is always starting with the revenues and, and then working backwards from there. Because you can't just make more revenue, so it is the easiest way to start going backwards like that. Anyways, that will be next on August 6th. There will be a citywide revenue sources and trending and just outlooks and what we can expect to, what we've been projected to receive next year. Also going through the police department and then also the park and rec division and the administration for CPD for the Community Planning and Development Department, as well as go through the public works department, administration and engineering, and then all of the utility divisions underneath that, water, wastewater, sanitation, garbage, fiber, and stormwater. I also made a, give you a printout in front of you, the very last page in that is a, I wanted to this year also be able to really help you go through and pinpoint what the, the changes are. These are basically like one-time things that are not necessarily in the capital improvement plan. There are three of them on here that are starred over there that have, that are actually part of the capital improvement plan. But I wanted to point them out in here because it will really help, I hope, I think it'll help you go from your, your expenditure budget and then also see if something increased, where can you find that at? So for example, the fund is a, it says where the fund's at, which division it is. The department is on your list here, what number the department is, and then your account number is actually on the, the breakdown and within that department. So if you see, for example, the, I'll just go to central services, property 700. You can see it was zero last year, and this year it's 40,000. You can go here and say, okay, that's a city hall vehicle of $40,000. So it should help kind of tie together the, the details and the one-time costs that are coming through in, in more detail for you. And tonight, we will be discussing all the ones in orange. Those are the different, those are the areas that we'll be discussing. And then the other ones will all be next on the six, on August 6th. And then I want to also move to the actual budget book to give you a quick tutorial. And then also, if you had any overall questions, go through that, but I want to move here first. So.
I might have to close your PowerPoint. I don't know. Maybe not.
Hold on. Let me share the screen. It's not coming up as a shareable screen. I'm trying to go to your website. There it is. Had to refresh. All right. So that link brings us to the proposed annual budget. We are still, we are using the same platform of ClearGov this year, but the, the actual layout has, has changed a little bit. It used to be at the top where you would go through threads of finding things. This time it's, it's moved to the, the left-hand side. The introduction, you can see the, the mayor's transmittal letter. And then also we can go through, this is, these parts in the introduction are all parts that were part of the budget last year, just been updated for current year. Also going through the executive summary, we have a few new things in here that was not in there. The short-term organizational factors, the long-range operation plan. Those are two new items in here that were not in the previous budgets. And, and then the fund summary overview. That's the same as it was in there last year. It goes through and they added a little bit more this year to the, the explaining what the funds are, the summary fund, what are the different funds. I've added more wording around that. Again, please reach out if you have any more questions. I think I've added quite a bit of explanation to things, but if you need more, let me know because I can always add more explanation to areas. But anyways, it goes through the fund, the fund summary will go through all the different funds. And I also gave you a printout of the one page. I like this snapshot because this shows you all the revenues and then all the expenditures on one page of each department. In the top, there's the green is the general fund, and then the orange is going to be your special revenue funds. And then your enterprise, basically like your business funds, the water and sewer, and then your debt service funds. So that's how, and then in here, that's where it's broken down in detail in this fund summary overview. Then also, then we have the department summary overview. This will look familiar. This was the, the proposed expenditure budget by the different departments. That is, was attached to the initial budget workshop or the budget, I guess, staff report and whatnot. So that's in here as well. And then underneath, all of these are going to be explanations. And all of the directors got, did updates to their narratives in here. So if you have any, and we'll go through all of these tonight, or not all of them, a part of them tonight, and then the rest of them at the August 6th meeting. Funding sources underneath that is going to be our different big buckets of funding sources, of property taxes, of resiliency tax, licenses and permits, and, and then from there beginning fund balance. So if, again, on those, if you do need more explanation or need more, please contact and we, I can explain more on those. Then we move into our capital improvement plan. And underneath that is what we're going to be covering tonight. It adds, has the department by division, the revenue sources of those capital improvement plans, and then also each capital project is in here, and I will just open one. So this one here goes through and says who the requesting owner is in the description, very similar to last year on how that's organized. And then last but not least, there's a debt services overview. We only have two outstanding bonds right now, and they're both water bonds. So we have, don't have a lot in that area, but that is all we have right now. Other than that, that's a high-level overview. I, and at this point, I mean, unless we have any high-level questions, I think we move at this point to talk about timing and whatnot.
Thanks, Sarah. Appreciate it. And counsel, don't be afraid of the budget book, lots of, and the public, lots of good, easy to access information. So encourage everyone to get the link, dig in. It's all very transparent and should be quite clear. So moving on from that, we did talk about sort of the, the cadence that we're going to move here in terms of tonight. We're going to go through some of the departments and capital improvements. I think we're going to probably start with Holly in just a couple of seconds here.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilman.
Just, just a point of clarification. So tonight's meeting, we're really making a decision on the maximum level of the budget, correct?
Correct. That's correct.
And then in a future meeting, we'll have the ability to, if we want to shift funds, reduce funds from one department, move it to another. Is that correct?
That's right. That's right. And we do have one specific action to take tonight, which is to set that maximum budget limit, which is proposed in the budget. So I believe at this time, what we'd be seeking is, unless there's additional council questions on the process, I'd be seeking or entertaining a motion for the city council to tentatively approve the fiscal year 2026 revenues and expenditures estimated by council, including notice of intent to use forgone levying authority and schedule the annual budget public hearing for August 20th, 2025.
Mr. Mayor? May I give a question to Legal? So we had some discussion earlier today. When we walk away from this meeting, this is the maximum the budget's going to be? We can go lower, but we can't go higher than what we set it tonight, despite not hearing from Public Works or from Community Planning in our other two budget workshops?
That's correct. This is your max budget. Yes, that is set on revenue. So unless we find some.
You have a donation first?
No, I just, I just want to make sure I'm clear before we leave the room tonight. Okay.
We would accept and can probably change it if there's any donations out there tonight. Happy to raise, raise the budget.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Along that same lines of that question, I guess, there is, we are proposing to use some of our forgone property tax.
Yep.
And there is some that we are not proposing to use. Is that correct?
Correct. And that's all by state, state code, yes.
So there could be additional money available in the forgone tax?
I will explain that when we go through the revenue there technically, yes, but you will lose that if you do, if you do this one-year thing. So the way that the property tax is, is that you can do 1% and you can roll that into the future years. If you do any more, you can go up to 3% for one-time capital costs, but it's gone after that first year. So I would never suggest doing that because it's forever gone.
Right.
But yes, you, you definitely could.
Okay.
So I think we're all clear that this is the maximum budget, and you're going to have the chance to adjust it as you learn more about the departments and hear about the revenues in the coming weeks. So again, I would entertain a motion for the city council to tentatively approve the fiscal year 2026 revenue and expenditures, expenditures estimated by council, including notice of intent to use forgone levying authority and schedule an annual public hearing for the budget on August 20th, 2025.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilman.
I'd like to make a motion to postpone this item till August 6th.
There's been a motion to postpone the item till, did you say August 6th?
I'd second that as well.
So motion and a second. Any discussion on that?
My, the reason for my second, we are, this is the busiest time of year for a lot of us. And there is a lot of information moving forward. And I would like to take the next couple of weeks and do a deeper dive and have more staff time before, before approving this.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Dick. And, and before there's any more discussion, we are under some statutory restraints and limitations in terms of advertisement. Does staff want to just brief us on the ramifications of this motion passing and what that would do?
Mr. Mayor, City Clerk Melissa Ward. The difference from what we would normally do is we would get that out to the public sooner in the newspaper publication, indicating that when that public hearing would be held on August 20th, this would just delay the newspaper publication a tad. We could still get it in under the wire.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And do you know offhand, remind me again, the date that the budget needs to be adopted?
August 20th is the last state weekend.
So.
We have to have it to the, to the county and filed, and that's the last day we can.
Sure. So I guess, I guess my only comment would be just to frame this, tonight we're setting the maximum, barring any new revenue. Barring any new revenue, um, it can only go down from here. I, I believe I hear what your, your concerns and what you're seeing, Councilman Schreiber and Dick. Um, I would put forth that, um, over the course of the next several meetings, you're going to hear from all the departments. Uh, you'll fully understand each and every line item. And then the intent there is to give you another meeting then, uh, to work through or several weeks. And then that final meeting to work through, uh, proposed changes, adjustments, uh, changing whatever you, uh, can get support for and feel is appropriate. So I, I would just put forth that, um, this doesn't prevent you from making adjustments. It gives you time to hear from all the departments and the specifics of their budgets. And, um, it keeps us on track and, uh, gives us a little cushion, um, for, uh, you know, anything going off the rails. But, uh, with that, uh, any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, can I get clarification from, um, Councilman Dick and Councilman Schreiber? What you've, what, what would those, what would that entail? Are you thinking time here with staff again, like meetings? Or are you talking individual time with staff or?
I, I personally like to dive into the numbers myself quite a bit more, uh, just based upon the weekend that we had, Independence Day, the business that we're dealing with, uh, and specifically pick some staff brain, uh, behind closed doors as it's needed. Um, I had about an hour today and I've got about seven pages of questions. Uh, and I would be willing, Mr. Mayor, I understand what you're saying. I'd be willing to potentially move the date up if we brought it at our next council meeting or what the follow, what's at the 16th or potentially the 30th? If that would make everyone feel a little bit comfort, comfortable. Uh, but I'd certainly like a little more time.
Mr. Mayor, if I might.
Council President.
Um, I would just concur and agree with, um, Counselor Dick that the 30th, I would be amenable to that.
Thank you. Can I just confirm, does staff have any concerns, uh, radical concerns if that gets adjusted to the 30th? For the adoption of the maximum budget?
No, not pushing on the timelines. I mean, it's, if, if something happened, we don't have a forum. I mean, it's a little bit of concern, but we'll make it work. I mean, from my standpoint, no.
Yeah.
Just more worried about, um.
The what ifs?
Yes.
Have we ever done it that late before?
Never, no, not that I know of. And, and this is following the same process that we've always done. Nothing any different. We've released it actually before we normally do, um, in the past or sometimes, so it, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I would just, I, I, I do hear you, Councilman Dick and, uh, Schreiber, um, you know, and it, I, I don't mean to repeat myself, but we are simply setting the maximum budget tonight. Um, so, uh, effectively the whole budget, once you, if you take action on this, um, you can erase lines and move things around. With Sarah's blessing, um, my role was to bring you a balanced budget. And, um, so I, I don't, I don't understand, um, I don't believe there's, I think it's a perception that there's, you're going to miss something. All we're really doing is setting that maximum amount the city can spend next year, based on the revenues that are anticipated.
Yeah, and I understand, uh, completely. I, I, and I, I do understand where you're coming from and the timeline and being nervous. Uh, at some point when we do get finished with the, uh, budget process, I would like to agendize us doing quarterly meetings on the budget so that we're not being smacked with this as, and, and obviously that's the way it's worked. It's worked like this for many years, uh, in years past. I think we've had, um, multiple budget meetings as, you know, on an individual basis is with counselors, uh, to really drill down so that by the time we get here, we really understand what's going on. And unfortunately, I just, I don't feel comfortable enough, uh, moving forward. And I might be one of only one or two people tonight, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, go ahead, Councilman Howard.
Um, I, I certainly appreciate my fellow councilmen's, um, comments. Um, I, I am worried about the timeline. Things happen and, uh, again, I, I think the intent of this is simply to go set a maximum number. All of the detail work can happen over the next two, three, four, five, six weeks. I think that's plenty of time for us to dig into the details, to go have the conversations that we need to when we have questions and not put at risk the, the August 20 date that we have to go hit to go approve the budget. And so I'm totally comfortable with setting a maximum, knowing that we can always work downward. We can shuffle funding from however we want to. Um, and so I, I concur with you. I, I think it's, uh, beneficial for us to take this step tonight, knowing that we have all of the freedom and all of the time after tonight meetings to work those details. So thank you for bringing it forward and I would fully support keeping it as, uh, a, a motion to approve tonight.
Thank you, Councilman Howard.
Again, may I?
Is there any other council member wants to go before?
I didn't, I just didn't get an answer from, oh, Councilman Schreiber. I asked for both of them.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Duquette.
Yeah, I think what I have to say has already been said pretty eloquently, but, uh, I would point out that we had a former mayor just speak in public comment that if we were to do what she recommended that we do, we would not be able to approve the maximum today. So I think there are questions that still need to be answered and, um, I would be willing to amend my motion to, uh, July 30th so that we do have a week in case of a lack of quorum or something like that.
It, it was already on the 20th to finalize.
The final, final.
Right.
Yeah.
So it's not any different, right? I mean, you're saying the 20th to postpone till the 20th, but that's.
Till the, uh, till the 30th of, of July.
Of July.
August, uh, August 20th is when it needs to be finalized.
Mr. Mayor, the motion on the table was to postpone, um, approval of the tentative revenues and expenditures, uh, until August 6th. Uh, that was the motion that was made by Counselor Schreiber, seconded by Counselor Dick.
For keeping us on track.
And for clar, I'm sorry, for clarification of the timing requirements that are being spoken of, the code requires that the tentative revenues and expenditures be published two times in the newspaper, seven days apart, previous to your August 20th public hearing. So those are the, that's the timing component we're talking about.
Thank you, that's.
And that can be met.
That can be met with the motion that was given. Did you amend your motion?
I would make a motion to amend my motion to, uh, postpone this item until our July 30th meeting.
Second. So motion and a second, uh, to amend the motion to postpone the adoption of the tentative, uh, revenue and expenditure estimated, um, including notice of intent to use foregone levying authority and schedule the annual budget and, uh, hearing for August 20th until July 30th.
Mr. Mayor.
Um, let's see, wait, a motion a second, uh, all those in favor? Oh, well, discussion, sorry.
Uh, I didn't get an opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Councilman.
And I don't want to get us off track. However, it seems some of the concern is, let's say in a hypothetical situation, the council and the mayor or just the mayor got a salary raise. Maybe you can clarify how that would not affect what we're doing.
Yeah.
Tonight, I mean, we're setting the, the budget where we're setting it, unless we get some magical donation, it's going to be what it is. How would we work around that? Say we decide to give the mayor a higher salary, maybe that could help with this motion.
I, I appreciate that. That's a great question and I'm going to defer to the expert in the room, which is Sarah. Cause I, I had a, I had a similar question, is something happens, how does that, does that work?
So there is no additional revenue, so it would have to be taken from somewhere else and figured out.
That's, okay. And that would be, wouldn't matter if we voted yes today or postponed.
Cause we're setting the.
See a bean.
Yeah, so I don't see a reason.
Where's it coming from?
Right, I don't see a reason to postpone this, or it's not going to affect the way we study or who we meet with or figure out until the next meeting. So I'm, I'm with Councilman Howard on that.
Thank you, ma, the Councilman, uh, Spur.
And, and Mr. Mayor, point of order, there's a motion and a second on the table to amend the motion. That will have to be voted on and then the motion will have to be voted on.
Thank you so much. Appreciate for keeping us on track. Any more discussion about the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
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 No.
No.
Uh, amendment fails, so we're back, uh, passes, sorry. So now we have, uh, ourselves, uh, the motion to, uh, move this to the July, I mean, July 30th meeting. Um, any further discussion on that motion?
No.
As amended.
So now the motion on the table is to amend, to, to postpone this hearing until July 30th? Decision, not hearing.
Uh, yes. So, so we're back to the adjusted date, um, as amended, um, any further discussion? Okay, will this be a roll call vote or a, are you good with a regular vote?
It's roll calling.
This'll be a roll call vote?
Council Spur?
Do you need clarification?
Yes, I need some.
So the amended motion passed and the new motion is something to the effect, um, that, uh, motion for the city council to, uh, postpone tentative approval of the fiscal year 2026 revenue and expenditure estimates by council, including notice sent to use foregone levying authority and schedule annual budget hearing for August 20th, 2025 until July 30th.
Okay.
Counselor Spur?
No.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Counselor Howard?
No.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Mayor motion passes.
Right, um, so we will take this back up, uh, on July 30th, uh, for the setting the maximum. But we will proceed with, um, additional items, which I think will be beneficial to all of you. I think it's the detail and guidance and input that you're seeking. So we'll start hearing from our departments, uh, moving on to item six. Uh, it's a budget workshop. We'll begin with the capital improvement projects and, uh, first we'll start with Sarah.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, go ahead, Council President.
I have a question as to why we're going to hear from the other departments as late as August 6th. The way that it was described when Sarah went.
Move that back to some business.
I would like to see that move to our next meeting as opposed to pushing it off because it doesn't seem like there's an opportunity to process that.
I, I completely understand that, yep.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, I will, um, adjust the.
Please.
Uh, I'll adjust and set the agenda, uh, as you request.
So just for, just for clarification, so the, the direction and the suggestion is to workshop all of the different areas of the budget previous to.
The 30th.
The 30th, okay. I just wanted to make sure.
A little more compressed, uh, timeframe on the front here, so it's good. So.
Mr. Mayor, that was Wednesday, the 30th, correct?
Um, Wednesday, the 30th for that item and, uh, for the maximum adoption. And I believe what Council President Rule is requesting is that our meeting on the night, 16th, uh, we jump right into, um, the, the remaining departments that aren't going to go tonight.
Correct, instead of leaving them until the 6th, because I believe we had police and parks and rec. And I'm not sure what else was on there, but we were also going to do revenue sources, which I think is better for us to know with more time to process than to push off until the 6th.
And we're assuming we're going to have a quorum on the 30th.
Um, the 30th would be pretty important on that, we'll be having a special. In the first, yeah, because we got to get that to the paper. We've cut, cut the, uh, margin very, very thin here, but.
Yep.
That's passed. Um, so yeah, I think this is going to help you all. Um, excited to hear, uh, for you to hear what, uh, your department heads, uh, and myself have put together. So with that on the capital improvements, uh, in six, Sarah, are you going to start this and then we jump over? Yeah, to Holly.
Give me one second, I'll share my screen. Holly Ellis, Public Works Director here with Eric Bush, our project manager. Presenting to you the fiscal year 2026 capital improvement project plan for Public Works. These are our capital construction projects. Um, we have some highlights for you tonight. If you have any questions, please just let us know. The first project is the Cedar Street reconstruction project. This is a rollover, so this is, um, not new to council or public. Cedar Street reconstruction seeks to reconstruct Cedar Street from Division to Lincoln. Improvements include new asphalt pavement, curb and gutter, new stormwater system, landscaping with street, street trees, um, a pathway on the south side and a sidewalk on the north side. Um, in accordance with our city standards and council directives per our workshop. Uh, the project budget is $2.5 million with funds coming from our general fund, resort city tax, local option, the wastewater fund and water fund. On the right side, you see a location map, um, and these are for construction efforts. So in this fiscal year, we have the engineering efforts underway. Our original intent was to start construction sooner, um, but we just had some delays. So you'll see the construction in FY '26.
The Great Northern Project has been, uh, pared down in this budget to, uh, can, in, improve, uh, stormwater in the Great Northern Corridor. So the, the bottom right of the screen here shows the alignment, uh, or not the alignment, excuse me, the, um, profile of the road and, uh, multimodal trail and stormwater improvements. Everything except, uh, what is included in the red box would be a future. And, uh, we don't have a timing, timeline for that, that portion of the project at this time because of the, um, lack of funding and, and cost for that project for the corridor. Um, but our intention is to improve stormwater in the corridor to, um, kind of stimulate the, uh, potential for economic development in, in that corridor and, um, solve some of the problems out there with respect to, uh, flooding in the spring and fall and mo, most of the year, except this time of year. There's standing water at a lot of those locations, so we've kind of pivoted to prioritizing that.
Yeah, I'd just add to that, sorry, Eric and Holly, um, you know, you will recall that we did a lot of the, um, work for that Chrissy Grant of the railroad crossing, 26, $29 million grant application. Uh, we did about a million dollars worth of preliminary design and engineering and we're trying to glean at least the stormwater, um, elements out of that. As you can see on the, the photos here, a lot of this area is inundated with, um, uh, flooding at times of the year. So, uh, it's really a barrier and hamper. We know we have issues in Silver Wings. We know we have issues, um, pretty much in the whole western side of the airport. So this would be trying to leverage that design that's already been done and, uh, implement a solution for the stormwater on the, uh, west side of the airport.
Mr. Mayor.
Um, go ahead, Councilman Trevor.
I saw somewhere else in the budget that there's, um, a line item for stormwater.
Utility.
Stormwater utility. Uh, now if this work was done before that stormwater utility was established, does that mean that all of these property owners are basically getting their stormwater done for free?
Uh, that's a great question, Councilman Schreiber. Um, I, I can't answer that at the moment. Um, I just know that, uh, we've got a million dollars worth of, uh, design that, um, could solve a problem. Uh, the actual implication, implementation of a stormwater utility, I don't know how that's going to shake out because we, we haven't gone down that road yet. Um, uh, but I, I can keep that in front of my mind, but, um.
Yeah, that seems like a good funding mechanism for this project. And, um, you know, I do recognize that, um, there is significant stormwater issues out there and it is affecting the roadway and it doesn't really make sense to put much more money into the roadway until you've addressed those stormwater issues. But, uh, if we're on the verge of, um, creating a stormwater master plan and possible utility that could fund this, I think it might be worth putting it off for a year.
Thanks for your thoughts. Sorry to interrupt Holly and Eric.
Mr. Mayor, I had a quick question.
Go ahead, Council.
As to, um, I was under the understanding that we might not have the money for the Cedar Street reconstruction because of the issue that came up with it, Boyer, with the culvert that we're managing. It is an emergency issue. It's two separate budget years, I understand that, but you said something relative to the Cedar Street project when you brought that up.
That's right. We were anticipating to be able to move forward with portions of Cedar this year. Uh, the budget reflects us accounting for the estimated, uh, repairs to North Boyer, the culvert that was collapsing. So we've kicked the project into the fiscal year '26 and that's what this project, uh, reflects. A project that's fundable based on estimated revenues and projections.
Okay, I thought we had already previously kicked it to 2026, so.
We, we did, this is just the, the project, this is the budget, so this is showing you where it is in the budget.
Counselor Roll, a little bit of clarity. We were hoping that we could move forward with the Water Main portion this summer. With the Boyer culvert, it was more of a, a staffing effort. We had to resource, uh, reallocate those resources to the Boyer culvert project versus the Water Main on Cedar Street.
That's perfectly clear now, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Duquette.
Holly, please, did the tree issue be solved? Wasn't that what was hanging up there?
That was not a hang up for that project. It's something that we're going to have to work back, work out in design and we'll bring to council two options, two scenarios.
Okay.
One, the scenario on what it's going to take to save the tree and the other alternative to not save the tree. So it'll come back to council very clear on what the consequences and costs are either.
Okay, that's what I meant.
Hard to put a value on saving a tree, but that's what we're going to propose to do.
Okay, thank you.
Want to mention SURA?
Yes, the, the Great Northern Project, the, the stormwater portion of this project would be funded utilizing the existing SURA dollars that expire in 2029, if I recall correctly. So that would be the intention for the utilization of those dollars with this structure of the project.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Trevor.
Looking at that flood map that was on that last slide, it does appear that most of the, the flood plain is north of the Gooby intersection, which in my understanding is all of that is within the, the SURA boundaries, but south of Gooby is not. Would the work be solely on the SURA side or would it include the south of Gooby as well?
It, it would have to be for the whole corridor because we, we are unable to get stormwater west of the railroad tracks, north of Gooby. The, the crossing has to be south of Gooby to basically collect water and convey it.
Okay, so it wouldn't be entirely SURA funded?
Not entirely.
No, and that northern district, Mr. Mayor, you probably could answer this, was also identified as a funding source for park acquisition?
There is a line item in the budget for park acquisition from the north, the large street path or the Dover pathway extension, north of large, yes.
And there's other projects in that northern district that that money could be used for if we found an alternate funding source for that project?
They just developed their budget this week and they have a variety of projects in that northern district in their budget, including potential improvements on the west side of Boyer in front of Pisney from Chestnut all the way up to Culvers sidewalk improvements, potentially supporting some public improvements up on West Mountain View in front of Timberline helicopters. And I can't remember what else they have in there, potentially a Baldi. No, I think that was it, and then the stormwater.
Excellent, thanks.
The only thing I would just add is to the stormwater, we'll come back and present to you our plan to do a stormwater plan that will support a stormwater utility in the future. Starting that out, there's not going to be a lot of capital coming in and that's going to take years to build. And we're looking at a multimillion dollar stormwater project that we have funding for. So that would be the value in prioritizing this project or this portion of this project is that we would be able to react quickly to resolve these stormwater issues and supportive economic development in this area.
Downtown revitalization phase three, the project will be under design beginning later this year and that design will likely take at least one calendar year from the time it's initiated. And then construction would follow thereafter. Construction schedule is of course TBD, pending a lot of details to be worked out. But the intention with the downtown phase three project would be to pick up where phase two ended, just north of Bridge Street and continue that down to at least Lake Street, but basically as far as the funding would allow us to get. And then likely kind of pausing improvements and then improving the intersection at Superior Street and First Avenue.
For our sidewalk projects next year, we have two sidewalk projects and they both happen to be on Boyer Avenue. The first one is a Transportation Alternative Program funded grant. We have $500,000 from this tap grant to infill gaps on the east side of North Boyer Avenue from East Mountain View Road up to Alexander Way. The second project that we have is again on North Boyer Ave, to design and construct sidewalk on the west side of North Boyer Ave from Baldi Mountain Road, south to the railroad tracks. That would be a SURA funded project. So Councilor Schreiber mentioned using SURA funds in that northern district for other projects and that's what we're proposing is to infill that, that sidewalk at that portion of Boyer. Pisney just relocated over there, so we're anticipating that we're going to have a lot of pedestrian users walking up and down that corridor. The third item in there is in lieu fee funds. So we collect in lieu fee sidewalk money. Any develop, any private developer who does not put in a sidewalk and it is approved by our city engineer can pay an in lieu fee. We have a pot of money and a pot of fees. Our city engineer looks for opportunities to spend that funding throughout town to fill in small gaps, particularly looking at ADA ramps. We have a lot of sidewalks too, intersections that don't have ramps. That in lieu fee money is in all sorts of quadrants and there's a lot of rules on where you can spend it. And that's that third in lieu money of how we, how we spend that sidewalk dollars in filling small gaps and addressing smaller ADA issues.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Trevor.
Quick question about the sidewalk in front of Pisney. Does that connect to anything on either end, any other sidewalks, I mean?
Our intent is to have sidewalk on Baldi Mountain Road. We have a, it's a plan to put sidewalk all across Baldi from Boyer all the way to Great Northern connection. So there's not full connectivity today, but that would be a piece of that connectivity.
Okay, do you have a timeline for that?
The Baldi pathway project, I do not have a time.
Yeah, I would just add to that, Councilman Trevor, historically, we, we did a bunch of research on this about a decade ago and there's a lot of conflicting elements of that. We didn't even did, we were about to do an appraisal for property acquisition and we've gone down the path pretty far. And I think it's worthy of a good discussion before we go down that just to understand what, what are the constraints with the power poles on the north side? We've got some real tight property lines on the south and a ditch. So before we do Baldi Mountain Road, I think we got to have a council discussion on, on what that looks like.
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, I certainly see the value of having a sidewalk in front of Pisney and, and see how that could increase pedestrian traffic. I just don't understand where that traffic is going to go. A half a million dollars is a lot of money. Would you remind me how much we spent on Pine Street sidewalk? Was that like 350?
Well, so Pine Street sidewalk's not a great comparable because that was a grant funded project. And when you see grant funds, it really inflates the cost of the project. Pine Street was $500,000, so it was a half million dollar project. And again, it was, it was grant funded. So these would be non-grants, so we'd be able to stretch those dollars much further.
Right, and so I guess my line of thinking is we were able, with roughly the same amount of money, we were able to get all the way from Boyer to Division on one of our busiest streets, most pedestrianized streets in town, as opposed to $500,000 on a block that doesn't actually connect anything on either end and won't for probably quite some time. I would.
It does connect all, I mean, I think this doesn't accurately show it, but the goal would be to go down to Chestnut actually, south. Because that's where we would pick it up, that's where the existing sidewalk ends. These are, you know, high level projects at this point. But just north of Chestnut it ends and I would hope we could extend it with good engineering north to Culvers, where we have the new affordable housing development, which ties into our industrial park. There's no way right now for anyone to come from our central core north to the industrial park really on the west side of Boyer. So that's, that's the hope there is that we could continue that connection. Right now, the only connection's on the east side.
Right, and I fully support filling in those gaps on the east side so that there's a continuous route all the way. I just think that that one stretch that doesn't, the, the paperwork that I saw said it was going to end at the railroad tracks, not at Chestnut, is that correct?
Apologies that I, I didn't get that quite right. The next street is past the tracks is Chestnut, I can make that revision.
So it will connect to a sidewalk at Chestnut?
Yeah, that would be the goal.
And that's where we're expecting most of the pedestrian traffic to be coming from.
Councilman Shriver, I appreciate, we, we do have a lot tonight. I, I would just encourage the council to take this information in. If you have questions, it is a workshop for sure. Maybe follow up, I just, we have a bunch of stuff to go through. I want you to get all the information you need, but to detail, you know, changing of plans and changing of elements, if we can just try to keep it to, you know, try to collect the information you need so we can hear from everyone tonight in a timely manner.
Yeah, I guess my point with this one and the last one, just to sum up, is that there are a lot of projects that could be used or that SURA funding could be used for. So to say that we have funding for this project, we have funding for lots of projects. We're choosing these projects and I don't see that these projects are the best use of that funding.
I appreciate that, Councilman Shriver, and I, with all respect, if I were in your seat, I think the appropriate time to express those passions or beliefs is when it comes to you, you can, you can call out a line item on the budget, you can make your statement, tell us why you're not going to support it and then say, I'm going to be voting no, rather than consuming a lot of, you know, time thinking about what ifs and other projects. Happy to work with you, with staff on projects that you like, incorporate them into the budget. So I just want to be mindful of the staff that's here, ready to present tonight and don't want to go down the hole too far on what ifs for each project. Maybe you can appreciate that.
Okay.
The last thing I'd wanted to point out on this item was resort city tax. So given that we have a grant funded project and a SURA funded project, we did not include a resort city tax sidewalk funded project this next fiscal year. We do have Cedar Street reconstruction project, which is a very large road project. And we also will have some much smaller seal coat pavement maintenance projects next year. So again, in, in summary, the resort city tax is going to be going to the Cedar Street large reconstruction project, very minor seal coat projects for pavement. Our next resort city tax sidewalk project is proposed to be in FY 2027. Influen infiltration, this is a project that we work on continually every year. So we do have money again this year to try to reduce INI in our system. INI is anytime groundwater or stormwater enters our sewer collection system, it's sent right to our wastewater treatment plant and our groundwater and stormwater, INI does not pay rates. So that burden to treat that water is on our rate payers. So we try every year to fix our leaky pipes, our mains, our manholes, our lateral connections, all the items that are the city responsibilities. So we have $280,000 next year to target manholes, fixing old manholes and rehabbing our lateral connections. Ties into our next project, which is our wastewater treatment plant phased reconstruction. We plan to start design for our wastewater treatment plant in FY 26. We are also planning to do bridge improvements. So we've had bridge improvements for the past couple of years. These are the projects that are critical to getting us to the point that we can reconstruct our plant. We are looking at, in the short term, the near term, currently in design, on the upper right hand quarter is, upper right hand corner is our belt press, which is facing imminent failure. There's literal zip ties and straps holding that thing together. So we have plans to replace that in our bridge project. We also, if you recall from our audit, had an item that required us to replace that. So right below that belt press is a picture of a screw press and this would go in our solid hands, like handling building to help separate our solids from our liquids before it goes to our digester. So that's one of our bridge, bridge project improvements that would hit construction, again, design this year and construction next year, which is mostly purchasing equipment. And then an update on the reconstruction project. We are working on our PER, StanTech was our third party reviewer. They had some really great comments, so there's really great back and forth right now between StanTech and Keller to finalize that PER. As soon as it's buttoned up and we have got a good draft, we'll, we'll bring that forward. We are looking at phasing this project, we've identified our first phase, so more to come.
This, this project is at the Little, Little Sand Creek Water Treatment Plant. It's kind of northwest of, of the plan itself, but this is the kind of weir and diversion. The photo on the left is the, is the weir itself and the photo on the right is upstream of that. On the left, the weir has received basically no attentions and it was, since it was constructed, short of, you know, mi- minor maintenance that our water treatment operators do periodically. And the photo on the right shows the, the kind of bank on the right hand side of that photo is at risk of sloughing, falling into, into the holding pond there. And if that were to occur, it would likely destroy our water treatment plant. So the project would be to basically and primarily evaluate the stability of the slope and evaluate the condition of the weir and then make the needed improvements and slope stabilization requirements so we maintain the function of the Little Sand Creek Water Treatment.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Quick question, were we on track to do that this year and then got deferred because of bids? Or was that for the building that we were going to reinforce and do some coding to and we didn't get proper bids?
Yeah, I'd love to give you an update on that one, this is good news. So we had in our budget a, a rehab project for the actual wastewater treatment plant. We put the project out to bid and it came in way over budget. Since then, Rich P. Day, our water treatment supervisor, has been taking on a lot of those projects in-house with his staff and then much, he's, he's been able to pick that project apart and piecemeal it. And he's working with, I mean, probably close to half a dozen contractors with a much smaller budget. He's still working on it, we want to come back to you because we're, he's quite proud of the cost savings that he's been able to accomplish. But he's able to see all of those rehab projects for like a tenth of what our bids came in at and a third of what our engineers estimate was. So those rehab efforts have been moving forward.
Okay.
Much slower pace and much slower, a smaller scale.
Okay, because those seemed vital when we spoke about them last and I just didn't see them in this budget, so I had a concern about that. So that's good to have that update, thank you.
And Councilor, this is a, this portion is a entirely new project.
Yeah, I know, I see that, it's a big one, thank you, thank you for that.
The street equipment, we're really happy to request and hopefully see some new equipment for our street department this year. Just a quick anecdote, when it was our branch pickup, both of our dump trucks were out of service. And I, I mean, we have a lot of very old equipment, but it wasn't planned for. So we actually had to rent equipment to do our branch pickup this year. So it's in front of you is proposed a six yard dump truck to replace our, oh, I don't have my notes in front of me, our, our two inoperable, one of our two inoperable dump trucks. Our approach in the second dump truck, which we will need, is to use the utilities dump truck that they just purchased and rent from them, from the street department. We're also looking for a new end loader. The end loader is over 27 years old and that helps support leaf branch pickup and our snow plow removal operations and also replace one of our two graders. Both of our graders are from 1999. And they, we operate two graders, we're, we're asking just for one this year. We have a lot of very outdated equipment at our shop. Most of the equipment is 20, 30 years old. So it's a, it's a big ticket item, but these support snow plow operations, branch and leaf pickup. One really great thing about our team is they look for cross functional equipment. So they try not to run one piece of machinery one time a year. So the plan for that dump truck, for example, is to have it as a salt brine truck in the winter, convert it in the summertime to a water truck. Of course, you could remove that tank and it can haul rock, dirt and. Of course, you could remove that tank and it can haul rock, dirt and, um, branches, leaves. So multifunctional equipment is what we're, we're looking for. So it's a six-yard dump truck and end loader and a grader for our street system.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilman Howard.
Uh, I'd just like to make a comment, Holly. Um, in, in full disclosure, the other day I was, uh, meeting with the mayor and I had a conversation about really evaluating what, what do we do in the city and what should we outsource? And capital equipment falls directly into that discussion. And so the AR I want the mayor and Sarah to work on is not this year, but looking forward to next year at the budget is what of the operations should we outsource so that we're not buying specialized equipment like this? We're using somebody else's that uses it all of the time. Um, and so I just say that as this comes up in this budget cycle, I am going to have difficulty approving it only because I want to see this next phase of the evaluation. It says, what should we be outsourcing? A city doesn't need to do everything. We need to have a great police department, a great fire. We need to do wastewater. We have to have a wastewater plant. Doesn't mean we have to run it ourselves. And so you might get caught up in that bigger discussion about outsourcing and whether or not it makes sense for us to buy equipment this year before we get through that review or not.
I, um, I appreciate those comments. I just offer that, um, how we operate today, this is very critical. Um, so we weren't able to provide a lot of services not having a dump truck. Um, if we didn't, if one of our 27-year-old graders went down, we wouldn't be able to, uh, cut the ice out of our roads, for example. So, um, that that third-party service conversation would have to happen really quickly and we'd have to pivot very, really quickly. So we can still serve our community and there's not a gap there.
Yeah. And, and I would just add, and I appreciate those comments, uh, Commissioner Howarth and, I mean, Councilman Howarth and, uh, if you go to your yellow highlighted sheet, these are, uh, I gotta take the hat off to Sarah. She's done a great job putting us in position where we do have some, uh, one-time, uh, expenditures. So, uh, this seemed like an opportune time. The reason I supported this in the budget is because it's a, a one-time, uh, expenditure that'll get us hopefully another 15 or 20 years.
And it's how we operate today. So we do provide, uh, leaf pickup, branch pickup and, uh, snow removal services. Are there any questions?
Any questions at this time for Holly or Eric?
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to tell Holly that, um, as a resident, we appreciate those services that you're talking about.
All right. Moving on, we will move on to, let's see, who's next on the hot seat? Fire Department. Hey, Chief?
Actually CIP Parks and-
Oh, oh, CIP Parks and Rec. Sorry. Sorry, Chief. Thanks, Holly. Thanks, Eric.
Good evening again, council. Holly, great job. She's got so many, so many complicated projects going on in Public Works. Um, Parks is a little bit, uh, simpler. We don't have quite as many, um, big capital projects, especially, um, as we're coming out of three or four years, actually more like 11 years of big Parks projects from the grandstands in Memorial Field to the turf in Memorial Field and the, the, the Memorial Dock improvements. Um, after those projects rolled, rolled up three years ago, we were presented with a seven and a half million dollar gift and a several hundred thousands of dollars of additional state and federal grants to do projects at Traverse Park, um, which are, as you've heard, week after week nearing completion this year. So in fiscal year 26, we're moving into, I don't like, more like a stable era of, of Parks, um, investments and capital projects. Um, we're, we're very much going to be pivoting towards maintenance and operations of our parks in the years ahead. So we will look here at the, uh, numbers for, um, uh, 26. You, you will see some, some fairly large numbers here. We'll start with the blue bar. That's the Parks Land Purchase. These are both, um, components. Actually, um, Sarah, maybe you could go to the, um, Parks Land Purchase tab and we can click on that. There we go. So there's two locations that are being considered for Parks Expansion in the next year. We've budgeted, um, from both the Parks Capital Improvement Fund, uh, Sura North District and the Development Impact Fee Parks, uh, Fund. $1.3 million for the possible acquisition of the Union Pacific Right-of-Way north of Large Street that we've, uh, discussed several times and the Baldfoot Disc Golf Course property, um, currently owned by the city's wastewater utility west of, um, west of Great Northern, um, on Baldy Mountain Road. So that, those are the, the, probably the biggest item in the budget for next year, uh, just those two Parks Land Purchases. So if there are any questions about that, um, both of those have been discussed here. You can see here how they, um, support, you know, various components of our comprehensive plan and our Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Um, these, these are the two land purchases in our budget for next year. So if there are any questions, we can discuss those.
Uh, go ahead, Councilman.
Mr. Mayor, I wonder where you came with that number?
Uh, go ahead. Uh, what, go ahead, Jason.
Um, it's, it's a combination of the, um, available funds from the accumulated reserves in the Parks Capital Improvement Fund, the Parks Development Impact Fee Fund, Sura, and, you know, estimated costs of, of the properties themselves. So I would point out that that 1.3 million is not, um, enough to purchase both of those properties. I think we know that.
Going, right. I wondered where, that's why I wondered how you came up with that for both of those. Cause without valuation.
Correct. Yeah. And the-
We, we have a valuation on the, on the, um, the large pathway extension. I'm currently awaiting a purchase and sale from, uh, the railroad. And on the Baldfoot Mountain, we would have to go through an appraisal. Uh, we've got some flexibility based on those numbers. Sarah can do some, uh, accounting work that would allow us to, uh, incrementally fund those over years, uh, one or two years from basically our impact fees that would be in, uh, in hand and then future impact fees.
And did we hear back from the railroad?
We did, yeah. About once every six months.
Cause I haven't heard anything.
The last, uh, communications was please prepare a purchase and sale. I think that was probably about four months ago. I, I sent that to her. It, they, the railroad, no, 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 uh, discredit toward them. They just, they have a lot going on. They don't move super fast.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Councilman Schreiber?
The last time that came before council, I believe we discussed, um, asking if they were interested in selling those other abandoned right-of-ways to the north. Did that ever happen?
Uh, I'll provide you a, a, a full transcript of the last email I sent her. Uh, I'd rather not go into all the details of it right now.
Okay. I'm just curious if-
I'll put that on my to-do list.
If we're committing ourselves to buying just part of it or?
Uh, no, the, essentially it was everything within the whole, uh, the extension. My thinking was, uh, it's taken six months to get a response on one simple question. I was concerned that by adding a second question, it could take another year or two. And we've been at this for many years. So I, I did narrow it to just confirming it was the whole part south of the spur, all the way down the pathway in, in essence.
And that valuation was, uh, 675,000?
I don't recollect off the top of my head.
Thereabouts, okay, 700,000 range, I believe.
About half of this?
Half of that coming from Sura.
Oh, sure. Yeah. See, right there on the screen.
Thanks.
Hey, thanks. Any other questions about lands purchase? We can move on to the City Beach RV Park Improvements, if you don't mind, Sarah. So, uh, we announced a few weeks ago that we had received that $950,000 RV Fund Grant. Very excited about that. We, we somewhat, um, you know, I don't know, hesitantly offered only the minimal match required for that grant, just thinking, you know, this, there's very little, um, opportunity cost here. If we don't receive it, there's plenty of other ways we can go with that property. It's doing just fine financially, um, without any major investments. But with a $50,000 match, we did receive a $950,000 grant. Um, very exciting to receive that grant. That's a big project for the Parks, Parks Division. And I, I wanted to show this one first because, uh, the, the, the adjacent City Beach Parking Lot Improvement Project was not fully funded. So there's always, you know, you know, downside in some cases. Um, totally understand why the Waterways Improvement Fund was re, was reluctant to fully fund a, a project that was clearly going to benefit more than just boat users. That parking lot serves a lot more than just, uh, boat, um, users, boaters, I should say, but we did receive 105 or $110,000, um, reward for that. So the, the match committed for that grant was 100,000. So combined, this is a $1.2 million approximately, um, project at City Beach. And, uh, we have just received the grant award documents that, uh, accepting of that reward will come to you at a future agenda. Probably on consent. And once we've, uh, completed the, um, grant agreement with the IDPR, I'll work with Cheryl to go out for, um, probably like a design, a bid-build type arrangement to find a local engineering firm to do the design on that. And then once we have a good design in hand, we'll go out and find a contractor to complete that. And I, I'm, I'm estimating that we'll approach those two projects in conjunctions that we have a single firm do the design and, uh, as a single firm do the construction for both the RV Park Improvements and the Parking Lot Improvements. And I, I don't really have any details on what specific improvements you're going to be able to get for 1.2 million dollars at this point. But I'd imagine it's going to be a, a noticeable improvement to the visitor's experience at our, at our most popular park. So that's the biggest, uh, Parks Capital Improvement Project. We have, uh, a plan for next year. And if we go to the Parks Master Plan Identified Projects, as you know, there's around $300,000 a year in the Parks Capital Improvement Fund. We offered 150,000 in matching funds for those two grants. With the remaining $150,000, we plan to basically turn our attention to some of the deferred maintenance needs in our parks. We, we don't have specific, uh, the Parks Commission has, has made some recommendations. In fact, at today's meeting, the, the issue of degraded basketball courts was the topic of conversation. So we may be looking at doing some improvements to basketball courts. You might've heard that we had a water leak at the, um, irrigation at Traverse Fields recently. I've had Austin work up some estimates on what it would cost to replace the 40-year-old water mains at Traverse Fields and Centennial Fields. That could be around a 40 or $50,000 project. So we do have some fairly sizable projects that will depend on these Parks Capital Improvement Funds next year. Um, but nothing in terms of new Parks Infrastructure. These will all be focused on, um, upgrading and, and maintaining our, you know, somewhat decred- degraded Parks infrastructure. So that's kind of it for Parks Capital Improvements next year. You've got sort of a larger, uh, project at City Beach with the RV Park and the, hopefully some stormwater, some lighting, maybe some landscaping improvements to the parking lot. What we won't get next year is a fully, um, resurfaced and, and subgraded, uh, parking lot. That's going to be around a million or more. And we will hopefully have some parking revenues we could put, put towards a more substantial parking lot improvement at City Beach in the next few years.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilman.
Quick question for you, Jason. I know we're a long way out here on the RV Park and the grant money, uh, design, build, contract or all that. Uh, we've heard a lot about value engineering over the course of time with the James Russell. Who, uh, would it be you that would be our particular project manager with the RV site?
No, like any project that we under, undertake, it'll be a, either an in-house project manager or we'd have to contract that out with a, with a project management consultant to, to handle that project for us.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, go ahead, Council.
Just also brief, after looking at those grants you sent me, thank you. Um, we will have time to talk about this another time, these two beach.
As far as the budget or as far as the design or?
Yeah, questions about what will be done.
Oh, sure. And there will be public engagement with whatever, um, design we undertake on the RV Park and improvements at the City Beach Parking Lot. You can rest assured of that.
Okay.
Similar to what Public Works does with, uh, you know, streets projects and what the Parks Division has done with playground projects and other projects as well.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Council President.
Mr. Welker, would you, um, have any idea as to cost savings to have project manager in-house as opposed to project manager consultation? It's my impression when we go outside of our realm that that's more costly. So do we have a plan moving forward for that?
I, I can speak to that, uh, Council President. Um, you know, you're, you're right. Most of the time it is more expensive to go out with a consultant. There's some pros and cons to that. Uh, with that, uh, if there's a drop in revenue from other sources, you don't have to keep that person employed full-time on projects. We do have, uh, one and, uh, we are presently interviewing, have we made the offer, Holly, for the second project manager? Second interview. So we're, there's a, a good candidate for a second project manager, uh, role, uh, that hasn't been ever filled. I don't think we've had two, uh, active ones in Public Works. So we'd be looking at sharing, um, th- those employees to do project management. Uh, we've got Eric and then this other position, it looks like we have some good candidates for. Or going out to, uh, contract. So it's just going to depend on workload, um, revenue coming in that's going to fund those other projects and balancing that.
Okay. I just have some concerns as our main focus is sewage treatment plant. Um, and I know that's going to take a lot of bandwidth. So I just want to make sure that we are realizing as much cost savings as we possibly can for that while trying to do the RV Park and not lose that grant money and such. Thank you.
Yeah. And, and just to finalize that, uh, Holly's really the point person with our engineering and related consultants on the sewer plant. And then she, under her, she's got Eric and this other project, uh, manager that will be coming on board, um, and then working with Jason and, um, the rest of us to see what, what's the best approach for that. But I hear you, um, balancing that cost for an outside consultant versus doing it in-house. Is that it, Jason?
Yeah, that's it for Parks.
Sorry, your Parks CIP so thin, but we've got lots of roads.
Just maintaining our parks.
Yes. Uh, moving on, um, I am looking at, uh, anything else on CIP? Did you want to touch on any of the other elements? Okay, great. So I guess, Chief, if you want to come up now and, uh, educate us or educate the council on our fire budget. Oh, sure. Uh, council up for a five-minute break?
Yeah.
All right, five-minute recess. It is 7:18. It's 7:28. We'll reconvene our July 9, 2025 meeting, uh, moving on to, uh, Budget Workshop with the Fire Chief. Gavin, please take it away and let us know how you keep it safe all the time.
Uh, no problem. Good evening, everyone. Uh, just, uh, want to start out with a couple of things, um, the little preamble for, uh, for the Fire Department Budget this year. It's less than it was last year. Um, you're welcome.
Thank you.
So, I mean, it's a little bit, but we had, uh, we, you know, we have reasons that it was a little bit less. It was not, um, it wasn't the one that I submitted. The one I submitted, well, of course, was higher. Till it hit Sarah's desk. She does an excellent job of saying no. As, as we like to say every year, but, um, we had a couple of things going on. We, we, we haven't added any FTEs, so we still maintain our 10, uh, in the, in the firehouse. We have three captains, the three engineers, uh, three firefighters and myself. Um, it's a fairly straightforward budget request this year for, for the following fiscal year 26. Um, we, our goal is to maintain fiscal responsibility. Uh, we want to seek out creative funding sources like grants, um, and, and grant funding and stuff like that for equipment where we can. Uh, just a couple of examples of how we got creative this last year and it also helped our budget this year was, um, we were, we needed, uh, uh, boat motors for our fireboat, something fierce. We had a fire, our fireboats from like, uh, 1993. And I think the, the outboards on it were old two-strokes. They were from 96. They're, limping along is what I would, that's, that's putting it lightly. Um, but we were able to, uh, hedge our relationship with Bonner County Sheriff's Office. Uh, they got some replacement motors. So we were able to get theirs, uh, for nothing. Um, all we had to do was pay for the mounting of the motors. And then when we did that, we found out that our boat trailer was about to, like, we, we told the guy, we, we pulled the boat basically just from the lake back to the station. He said, I honestly don't know how it got back to the station the last time. Cause it was so cracked. It was a homemade, homemade trailer. Somebody had put together, um, we got that at a really good deal too. So instead of about, you know, $30,000 for a trailer, we got it for six or something like that. So that worked out. Another example of, of hedging our, our relationships with other departments, uh, we were in search and have been in search of and as a self-contained breathing apparatus, an air compressor for our breathing air. And we were looking at about, as you can see, about a hundred thousand dollars in the budget. If we couldn't get a grant for it, we were going to have to purchase it. It's like mission critical for us. Through through the grace of whatever you want to call it. We got together and Pullman Fire Department actually had a compressor and they're going to be donating it to us. So their last update I got is that they're going to be putting it on their consent calendar on the twenty second. And then, so hopefully around the end of July, first part of August, we'll have that here. We have a, what's a little bit of electrical to do and I think a couple of pieces to get. But that's that's huge. We couldn't have asked for that better timing. That was, that really worked out in our favor. So.
Melissa, will you make a note to prepare a thank you note to the city of Pullman from the council and all of us to sign?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I can hand deliver that when I'm going to go pick it up. I just want to say, you know, our crew is doing, they do a really amazing job of creating a needs list and a wants list. And they take those and they prioritize those really based on need and what we have to have. And if we can't get something this year through grants or through funding, we we try to pursue it next year. That's pretty much us in a nutshell. We did, we did have some decreases. We, after going through the budget, we we did drop some of our line items down just to kind of help maintain that. But, you know, again, it's 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 driven by revenue. And we we all know that revenue is going to be down, predicting it's going to be down this year. So we're, you know, trying to do our part. I know, just like every other department is doing their part, too. So basically just here to answer any questions that you guys might have.
Thanks, Chief. Appreciate it. And Yeoman's job to find those abilities to reduce the budget as I asked. So thank you so much. Questions from the council? Chief, that was the fastest hot seat you'll ever be in.
It was a little faster last year, but that's okay.
Okay. Well, thanks for the great work. Keep up.
No problem.
Moving on, let's talk to Cheryl. Is, oh, there you are. Thank you. Cheryl, Cheryl Hughes, Central Services Director. Cheryl's got a lot. That's.
It seems like a lot, but it, I think this is gonna be painless. So a central services is comprised of eight full-time equivalent positions. In information technology, there's two full-time positions. City clerk, there's two full-time positions. Human resources, there's one full-time position. Grants, contracts and procurement has one full-time position. And central services has two full-time positions, and that would be myself and the admin assistant for central services. So I will go through each of the budgets within central services. The legal services budget and the clerk services budget are pretty status quo. There's not much to discuss unless you have specific questions in regards to those budgets. There's nothing of significance to speak of. So the central services budget would be the next budget to discuss. And in that budget, I just want to touch on a few. First, the professional services, human resources. You will see it's going from seventy five thousand to ten thousand for next year. And that is a result of the the job study being completed. So that line item was was reduced. I will also mention that that job study came in far less than what we budgeted for for this fiscal year of that seventy five thousand. It was under thirty thousand. So just a little piece of information there. Going down to other services, insurance, the ICRAP. That the ICRAP insurance, that's the city insurance, has increased a hundred and forty seven thousand, seven hundred dollars over the course of the last three years. And it has seen a forty four percent increase with this year's cost being three hundred and thirty four thousand, five hundred. So that is one that we see significant increases each year, especially over the last two years.
Is that line item five hundred, just to call that out? What's in front of us, Cheryl?
That is.
Thank you. Just what's on the screen, Council, following.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor. Go ahead, Councilwoman Trevor.
Yeah, just curious about that. Is that based off of claims that our city has made? Or is that just the general?
That's just the gen.
Across the board.
Yeah, ICRAP is made up of Idaho municipalities. And based on claims and and utilization, basically, then every year it gets adjusted. And all the cities are just provided, this is what the rate is. So.
Perfect. Thanks.
It's not necessarily based on our utilization, just statewide in general.
Sure. Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Howard.
Hi, Cheryl. Real quick. So, I mean, medical rates going up is nothing new. It's been a trend for many years now. When when does the city employee has to start to pick up more and more of the portion versus the city paying for it? Do we have those kinds of conversations?
As far as the city insurance, we we are very limited. There really is. I haven't found another agency in Idaho that provides insurance. So ICRAP is.
I think he's speaking more towards the medical. Is that correct?
Are you going back to medical?
Yeah, sorry. I'm.
Sorry.
Sorry. Yeah, back to the medical side.
Medical.
As those costs continue to go up. Do we have conversations about employees sharing more and more of that burden versus the city? What are the trends that we're seeing in?
Last year, the employee share was increased. We are we are just going to be starting that insurance, medical insurance process like in August. And we are intending on getting other pricing from other companies as part of this process this year. There's not necessarily an expectation that we're going to find better, but we certainly need to be seeing if we can find better better rates. We have a long history with regions which has helped our insurance rates. So yes, the employee, unfortunately, last year, the share went up. Depending on what happens this year, could happen again. We might need to look at the the benefits, maybe the prescription plan, something. Again, it just says based on utilization, but at this moment, it looks like we might be seeing a twenty percent increase, which is significant.
Yeah.
So, but that is just so early at this point. We won't get anything back from regions until about August, which is why that's also when we can start reaching out and getting other pricing from other potential companies.
Thank you. And I I know it's a challenge.
Yeah, Councilwoman Howard, the short of it is the long-term trajectory is completely unsustainable. The limitations on our property tax general fund because of House, the House bill, was it three eighty nine, I believe, three percent? Our our new revenue does not even meet the increases that we're seeing. So over time, the council's going to have a tough decision to keep taking away from projects and dedicating more general fund towards those benefits or look at alternatives and cost sharing.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I would need to request a short pause of the meeting, please. My technology is locked up. I may need to reboot it.
Pausing, seven thirty nine. Reconvening, seven forty five, proceeding with Central Services. Cheryl Hughes, Director.
Thank you, Mayor, councilors. So picking this back up on the central services budget, the next one I'm going to go over briefly is the operational supplies and equipment in the central services budget. You'll see that it's at twenty six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. And that is reflective of a twenty five thousand dollars for emergency operations supplies and resiliency supplies as requested to be put into the budget. The next item is signage supplies and equipment, and that's at forty five thousand dollars. Again, a one-time expense. And that is for San Point. You're welcome, sign.
I think we're crossed, just so everyone can follow. I think we've gone over onto the yellow from what's on the screen.
Okay, thanks.
Hard to follow where you're at.
All right.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, are we? Are we good?
Do you have the yellow one? Top of the, the central service, it's the first three items.
Okay, gotcha. Okay.
The first one's the West and North Gateway signs. And and I can speak to that. That's that's, you know, I I did visit with a couple of council members. There was an interest in properly signing just like we have when you get off the byway, something from the north and the on on US two and coming from Dover. And that's a placeholder one-time money for that. The next one is resiliency supplies to keep us aligned with FEMA and Department of Homeland Security guidance to be self-sufficient for seventy two hours as a city and do some investigations and planning on how to keep ourselves resilient in the event of a service disruption. Go ahead, Cheryl.
Okay, and then in the seven hundred under property there, you'll see forty thousand dollars. That is for another one-time expenditure for a city hall pool vehicle that will replace one of the pool vehicles that we currently have that are oh, I think the one that they're looking at replacing is a two thousand and five or maybe even a two thousand and one tracker. And it doesn't really even run.
A geo tracker. You remember those?
Good for.
So that's being put in to replace one of those older vehicles. And that is the central services budget. So before I go on to the information services budget, is there any questions on that one? With none, we will move on to information services. This is our IT budget. Calling out the.
And and I'll just jump back to that gateway sign, council members. I will be bringing you and will engage the Arts and Historic Commission on design that'll come to you. I don't know what forty five thousand dollars would buy for two signs, but I will keep you. It'll be at your your direction, what those look like.
Okay, so under computer supplies. That is going to be which section? That is your section.
Yeah, we've got to hear the two servers and sand storage.
That's further down.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So what we've got is this year for computer replacements, we're budgeting for thirty five thousand dollars. Thirty two thousand of the thirty five thousand is for computer replacements. Twenty seven thousand is for computer replacements at City Hall. And five thousand is for computer replacements at PD. And this is something we budget every year for our ongoing computer replacement program.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Howard.
Real quick, what what do you deem as the useful life of a PC? How how often are you rotating? Is it every four years, every six years?
They're on a three-year
Wow.
cycle.
That's really short. I came from an IT company and it was five.
Yeah, it was five before. But they're on a three and four year cycle now. Just because the way technology was moving. And that was in the information technology master plan recommendation.
I'll I'll catch you offline. We'll have a
Yeah.
deeper discussion.
Yeah, and we can bring the IT manager into it as well.
Thank you.
So then the next is, I just wanted to point out, if you see an increase in the software for imagery and tracking, it is higher this year because we are doing citywide GPS tracking in all the vehicles and the central services information technology budget is what will be paying for that. So it is a little bit higher. But basically, we're able to do all the city vehicles, including the heavy equipment for eight thousand dollars. And in what we've been paying was fifty four hundred dollars, and that was only for heavy equipment. So that's a much better value. And it was a request of the Mary.
And Cheryl, I'm gathering that a couple of council members are getting, looking for line items. So that's under six hundred or seven hundred where the arrow is.
Be under six hundred.
So that's under that arrow on the screen right there. We don't have that detail presently.
Under six hundred. This next one's going to be under six hundred as well. Thank you. And you will see some, there's a significant difference in server backup licensing. That's our our rubric. It's it's basically, there's nothing budgeted for this year for fiscal year twenty six. Fiscal year twenty five had seventy three thousand dollars budgeted. And that's because it's on a three-year license. So we don't have anything do on that license again until fiscal year twenty eight. And you'll also see, again, it's in the supplies line or the six hundred. You'll, there's a twenty seven thousand dollar for CrowdStrike. We have not had a expense in that one since twenty twenty two, and that's because it's also on a three-year license and it's coming due this year. And the last item is within capital. So it's going to be it's in your capital equipment for information technology. And that is a hundred and twenty four thousand dollars. And that is covering two servers that need to be replaced. They have, they're on a replacement recommendation every six to seven years. So it is, it is time for replacement because we are on our seventh year with those servers. That accounts for seventy two thousand. They're about thirty six thousand dollars a piece. And then additionally, we need another fifty two thousand as part of the server purchase to go towards a storage area network device, which is the fifty two thousand. I also want to state that our current servers, not only is it due for replacement because of the seven years, but they do not meet the Department of Defense standards or guidelines. So replacing those puts us back in following the standards of DOD. Which is important for cybersecurity. And is there any questions on the IT budget? Okay, that concludes the central services budget.
Thanks, Cheryl. Are there questions for Cheryl on central services? Of course, you're free to visit with her over the coming weeks individually on any particular line item questions. And if you need assistance getting through the budget book to find those line items, we can help you with that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cheryl. Finance.
All right. The finance department has five full-time employees, one payroll, one AP, one utility biller, accounting manager, and I'm in that department as well. It is split into two different divisions. One is the regular finance and one is utility billing is a hundred percent to build back to the utility divisions. So that's why it's split out differently. Inside the regular finance budget, we pay for a financial audit. That's about thirty five thousand dollars a year. We also have banking costs, and those have actually gone down. We've tried to streamline things and we've done, we've moved to basically double checking things on the inside. And so anyway, we've we've reduced those costs about two thousand five hundred over last year. And then also within that finance budget is we reduced our miscellaneous expense. That was always a placeholder. And this year, the budget was really, really, really tight. So we've been cutting every dollar that we can to do it. And that was one that was just a miscellaneous to be able to just in case something happened. And that's been cut to zero. And then in the utility billing, we contract out our Um, and then in the utility billing, we, um, contract out our utility billing, um, stuffing of envelopes. So we do, um, they actually stuff them for us, um, and then send them out. Um, we have moved to, um, electronic, um, our big push the last couple of years is really moving to electronic billing. Um, not only ACH payments, but also, um, email billing. And so those costs have reduced, we've reduced those by two thousand dollars this year. Um, and, um, the banking on that side, however, utility billing has gone up because we've now done more ACHs, so one of those give and takes. And, um, last but not least, our postage also has gone down in that, um, department because we are doing less billings or less mailing of the billings. Um, and that is for my department, um, pretty straightforward and easy, uh, when it comes to what, um, the, the dollars. The other, only other thing that's in, um, the finance department, because it really doesn't have anywhere else to live, um, is the LID funds. And that is the local improvement district. So if, uh, local improvement district is passed, um, by the voters, um, or by the area that it's in, then we basically upfront the, um, dollars, we pay for that project and then we turn around and we go take a loan. And, um, we're paying on that loan over the next, um, depending on however long, long that loan is. And then we also then bill those, um, homeowners and we collect that back. So that is the, um, the LID fund in here, there's only one left. And, um, that is the, right there is the payments basically that are to pay the, um, the, um, long or the interest and the principal payments for that one loan. And others than that, that is all from mine.
Thanks Sarah. Um, if, uh, I would encourage all council members to, uh, do a little research on local improvement districts. It's a very interesting tool that you all have the ability to, uh, utilize to fund, um, area specific projects. Um, we haven't used it, I don't think, very recently, but it is a tool available, uh, and if there's any questions for Sarah, please.
Mr. Mayor, where is that tool?
Uh, it is, uh, it would be in state code, um, so you could just search Idaho code, um, local improvement districts.
Move down to streets.
I'd be curious to, uh, for a second, uh, Fonda and Zach, you work in other municipalities, do you see LIDs being used infrequently, consistently? Once, yeah. I call it the nuclear option, but it, it, we, basically you can force a project on a neighborhood or a whole city, um, and then charge it back to them. Uh, with just a vote of a council and a hearing. Okay, sorry Sarah, today, Gress.
Our public works director, Holly Ellis, the streets department. So, uh, item one hundred salaries and wages. We have seven, um, full time employees in our street department. If we have a supervisor, two senior operators and two, or sorry, four operators. Um, they're very qualified, uh, over seventy percent of the staff has road scholar training and road master training. So we're really, um, proud that we're able to provide such a high level service to the community. The streets department provides, uh, snow removal, ice removal on our streets. Pavement maintenance, like, uh, on the lower end such as pothole patching. We contract out all of our larger pavement rehab projects and road reconstruction projects. Uh, this is a maintenance department, not a road reconstruction department. Uh, we do street sweeping, uh, branch and leaf pickup as well. Pretty much, um, very similar budget to last year, just a couple of items to highlight. For tech services, this is item three hundred, we have fifty thousand in the budget to revisit um, our traffic study and our multimodal transportation plan. So we have some, um, outdated traffic impact, or sorry, um, traffic analysis data. So our intent is to pick up that data that's from twenty eighteen and update it and, um, get some, get a better idea of what our growth impacts are in the immediate future. This, this effort and need for this kind of came about when we were doing our impact study. We were identifying projects and we were using old data from twenty eighteen. So it's time to do a refresh on our, uh, transportation, um, engineering assessment efforts. So fifty thousand dollars going to that technical assessment to update our traffic modeling. The other item in here is under seven hundred, this is for the capital equipment. We went over some of this earlier in the capital, but, uh, portion of the presentation. But again, this is for a new end loader, a new grader and a new dump truck, all to support our snowplow operations. Our, um, branch and leaf pickup and, uh, two service vehicles, a one ton and a half ton. The intent for the one ton is to outfit it with a plow so that it's not just a vehicle that is useful in the summertime as we're restriping our roads and painting our roads. Um, but also in the winter time that it can respond to smaller, um, cul-de-sac plowing, for example, or if there's a residential area that needs a touch up, instead of getting our big snow plows out there, um, we can have a more efficient way to respond with the, the one ton truck. Um, all of the vehicles that I mentioned are replacement and, um, I do have
Mr. Mayor.
Information on the age.
Go ahead, uh, Councilman Howard.
Real quick while you're looking, Holly, um, y- you used the word that this is new equipment. Do you mean new to the city or brand new?
So the intent is that it will be new to the city, all of it is replacement items. So these aren't, uh, none of this is equipment that would be new operations to our staff. The intent in this budgeting is to budget for new equipment. We don't have a sense right now on what used equipment costs. If you price used equipment, it, it's gonna be gone tomorrow. So our intent is to be conservative budget for new equipment and then when we go to purchase, we'll look for used. A lot of times when we look for equipment, we do try to look for new. Um, an example will be the dump truck. We want to retrofit that dump truck so that it can support all of the operations. We'll look for used, but it's very likely that we're not gonna find a dump truck that is gonna support snow plowing, brining and, um, water tanks. Uh, and we do have an example of that. We bought, uh, two used dump trucks years and years ago. And they were great, they were used, um, but they had plows on them and when we, we bought those dump trucks and now they're just snow plows. We can't remove the snow plow, so there, there's one time use. So we'll absolutely look for those opportunities for used equipment, but we budget conservatively for them.
Thank you.
The end loader, um, is two thousand, at the grader is the year nineteen ninety nine. And the dump truck that we're looking to replace is from nineteen eighty nine. So this is all equipment that is, um, well past its useful life. Any questions?
Any questions for Holly? Thanks Holly.
Thank you.
And moving on to planning and building divisions, art of the community planning development department. We're gonna split Jason up into two meetings here, so. I don't have to go through everything.
Mayor, uh, Sarah, we'll start with planning, please. Um, the planning department budget, you're going to see, uh, let me see what I'm looking at here. Okay, yeah, so the, the big change you'll notice is the additional salary and wages allocation from one hundred and seventy three thousand to two hundred and fifty one thousand. Um, the explanation for that is that we have expanded the planning division from two FTE to three FTE. So we've gone from having just a city planner and assistant planner to having a, a city planner and associate planner and an assistant planner. Um, the, the benefit of, of expanding the division, um, on one hand, you can see that we're going to eliminate the need for, um, tech services in, in the planning division. Um, last fiscal year, we spent over a hundred thousand dollars in, in planning technical services and that was just for about six months of planning consulting work. Um, from Darren Fluke. This, this year we've already, um, well, we had budgeted ten thousand this year, I think that was later increased to thirty thousand. So, uh, planning technical services are extremely expensive, bringing more of those, um, services in-house are going to realize a savings overall. So that increase in payroll for an, an additional planner will result in larger decreases in, um, consultant fees. And we have, even with a, a, a senior or city planner and assistant planner, we've, we've still had to use, um, external planning consultant services to, to stay on top of the permit load that we've had this year. So we, we do expect to fully phase out the, the, the need for, um, external planning services. Um, other than that, we have some slight increases in our, um, other services category. Uh, these are to more accurately reflect, accurately reflect the, the costs of, um, advertising, advertising that refers to public notices that go out. Um, we, we, we've, um, improved our, and streamlined our, our noticing procedures in the last year. Um, thanks to more attention from our city planner Bill Dean. And, uh, for example, a planned unit development where we have to notice that, um, for times. Uh, as you've seen, there's several rounds of hearings. So a single plan unit development, uh, racks up around a thousand dollars of noticing fees. So in anticipation of, of the, the scope of, um, applications next year, we're, we're increasing that budget slightly from two thousand to thirty five hundred. Um, other than that, printing and binding, we, we have a budget of fifteen hundred dollars. That's also to acknowledge the, the costs of printing some of the signs needed for noticing. And beyond that, there's really no other changes in the, in the planning division budget. Um, if there are any questions about that, I'm happy to take them. I can move on to building.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, real quick, go ahead, Jason. So, uh, where are we at now? We're roughly a year, I don't even know how long, since we directed the staff, uh, to work on community workshops with building heights, building massing. Uh, we've been waiting for the planning department to get fully filled out. We have that here. Um, is there a need for additional consulting that we might have? Are you guys, um, feeling comfortable that we'll be able to get on that here, uh, relatively soon?
One hundred percent, yep. And with, um, Eric Brubaker now, five weeks into the job, um, he's, he's already taking on, he actually, he's, he's just completed his first subdivision, uh, staff report for a meeting next week. Um, he'll, he'll take on that current planning work that, that has consumed Bill for the last year so that he can turn his attention to the code updates that this, this body has requested. Um, we do not anticipate needing external consulting services for that work. Uh, Bill is very confident that this is something we can do with our own planning commission with, uh, through our own community engagement and outreach. And I look forward to being a part of that with Bill, taking the lead in the next six months to a year.
Awesome, thank you.
That's another benefit, of course, in, in addition to the reduce, uh, external consultant fees. We've now got bandwidth in the planning division to do that, that long range, um, you know, code writing work that's needed, starting with commercial A.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Council.
Sorry. Did you just say six months to a year again?
It's going to be, no, not until we start.
Okay.
That's the timeframe for, in, in which that effort will take place.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're, we're beginning this summer on that effort, not, not six months to a year from now.
Okay.
Any other questions for Jason on planning?
Yeah, we can look at building next.
Yeah.
Okay, building, um, you're, you're gonna see no real change in the salaries and wages. The building division includes three FTEs, our building official, our, uh, plans examiner and permit tech and our building inspector. So that, that's a, a, you know, a fully staffed team right now as well. I'm, I'm pleased to say the planning and building are, are all fully staffed right now and, and what I would call high functioning teams. Um, we are actually seeing a reduction in the overall budget for building. That's because, uh, with a fully staffed building division, we no longer, um, have the need for external building technical services as well. Um, there was a period last year when, uh, our previous building official left that we actually relied on that individual to do some consulting work for us over the, the months after she left. Um, now that we've got a fully licensed and certified building division, we no longer need that external consulting service. So we've reduced that budget by twenty thousand dollars. So that's building.
Any questions for Jason on the building division?
Okay. And we'll do, uh, parks and recreation.
Um, at our next meeting, yeah.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Um, government building, does this all fall in the same category as well? The government, uh, cause I, my question is about this one time government building, the city fire alarm at a hundred thousand.
Yeah, we can, we can cover that. Um, I think that was probably gonna be, uh, now's as good a time as ever, so.
If you wanna wait, I'm, I'm happy.
So, um, what we.
Art the CIP plan. It's a perfect time to.
Yeah. So, uh, the background on that is, uh, we learned, and maybe the chief can speak to this, that during the remodel, um, well, of course, as part of our preparedness, uh, effort and training and resiliency, uh, one day we had a fire test, fire alarm test, air like at school. And lo and behold, uh, I hope I'm not disclosing anything I shouldn't, but the fire alarms did not go off because they don't exist. So, um, in the remodel, uh, for reasons that no one quite understands, um, we did not install fire alarms in this building. And I'll let chief speak to, um, this number represents, uh, a conservative estimate of what it would take to, um, bring this building up to code incrementally.
Yeah, so during, during the remodel, uh, when, you know, if you've ever done remodels or known someone that has, you, you hit a certain, uh, in commercial capacity, if you hit a certain percentage of the building and a certain dollar figure during the remodel, you have to bring the building up to whatever the current code is. And, uh, Idaho and state of, state of Idaho, city of Sandpoint, we have adopted a twenty eighteen international fire code. Um, as well as the current, I'm not sure what the current building code is, but, um,
It appears.
The, basically, the, basically the building was split in half. So we didn't hit the dollar amount and we didn't hit the, the percentage of the building that was getting redone. Um, by doing that, they're able to skirt, saves money. I mean, that's, you know, that's what they were hired to do. Um, but it's, and it saves money, but at the same time, you're just, you know, you're playing roulette, going around, you know, doing an end around just so you don't have to bring it up to code. Um, it, it could trigger sprinkler systems and, um, only half the building sprinkled. And the only thing that has an alarm in the building is the actual sprinkler system. So if the sprinkler system goes off, it sends out an alarm, but it's not, it doesn't go to dispatch, it just rings the gong outside, so.
Yeah, so, uh, we are all aware, the chief's brought us up to speed, we thought about the stick up fire smoke detectors. Um, I thought that was a, a cost saving measure, but, uh, he convinced me that we need a proper system, so that's not.
Thousand, that's our stopgap.
It's just, just for clarification, the, the sprinkler system is already in the building?
The sprinkler system is on, I think it's just on that side of the building. Where, where they drew the line was basically down this hallway, um, where the doors are.
Okay.
So they split it running east and west. Um, the sprinkler system is serviced on, I don't think the police side, I don't think the police has sprinklers either, but I know, I know it's got it on the other side.
So this hundred thousand is just the alerting system that would alert people in the building as well as potential would, would trip the sprinklers?
No, 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 it's gonna, so it's the alarm system.
Mm-hmm.
Um, just think of the, you know, a smoke alarm system in your house. So if, if it detects smoke or heat or what have you, whatever detectors we have put in, whatever the code calls for. Uh, when it trips the alarm, it'll notify audio and visually the strobes and stuff inside the building so people know that they need to get out. And it's also addressable, so it calls out to the dispatch center and gets the units en route. It's being a commercial building, um, we have the one station, but our auto aid in a commercial, um, a commercial fire alarm, we send two units. It's just a safety and a redundancy thing, so, um, yeah, that lets everybody know who needs to go and when.
Okay. And chief, does this tie into that big red emergency push button as well? Behind the.
No, no, that's a, that's a different thing.
Okay.
That's a different thing.
That one doesn't work either.
That's the, that, that is a security, that's the lockdown button. That's not the, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I would hope that it comes in under a hundred thousand, but you gotta throw a number at this based on advice, so.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a timeframe on that?
Next fiscal year.
The whole year? I mean, so we wouldn't know if there's leftover money or something else.
No.
Okay.
I mean, we'll, we'll presume, yeah, depending on the amount, it would probably come to council. Um, uh, but if not, is there a preference? If there's extra money where you'd like to see it spent? We can talk about that later. It's one time money.
Oh, dang, one time money. Okay.
Any other questions for the council? I do appreciate you taking the time to hear, um, from the departments. Uh, hopefully you found this helpful. Um, I know you're gonna have other questions, um, please feel free to reach out to department heads. Um, and arrange time to visit with them about specific line items. Feel free to reach out to me if there's objectives that you have for the budget that you feel, uh, you want some assistance trying to think through other ways. This budget, uh, again, represents, um, you know, Sarah, my best effort to bring forward a balanced budget that meets the strategic priorities of the city. Um, it, it's not, uh, anything I'm emotionally attached to, so, um, please feel free to reach out if you have questions or wanna think about ways to adjust it to your liking.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, go ahead.
I have a suggestion on that line, so I heard a lot of very personal requests regarding. I have a suggestion on that line. So I heard a lot of very personal requests regarding potential adjustments to the budget tonight, yet it will require consensus of the council to move items around or move line items around budget. So you're going to hear the rest of the department head presentations on July 16th. You're going to vote as you indicated tonight on July 30th to tentatively approve your maximum budget. I would suggest that on August 6th, you have your final budget workshop where the council discusses the movement of any items and gains consensus on moving those items. Because I would hate for you to roll into a budget hearing where a council member is impassioned about not getting their way on something and then votes no for the entire budget. Though you need to pass a budget, you need to find consensus on the things that you want to move around. So I would suggest doing that workshop on August 6th.
Thank you. I appreciate that suggestion. Legal counsel Fonda?
Can I add one more thing too?
Please.
There is, so there, you gotta, there's buckets of money. So I want to make sure that everyone's aware that you cannot be moving like, or thinking that I can take water money and put it in the general fund. There's also one-time money that is spent with its beginning cash. That's what this list is. It's, and you can't use that for operational type stuff. So it needs to, if you have questions, call me because there's a lot of nuances here. Another thing to add to it is that within the different departments within the general fund, some of that is allocated back to water and sewer. So I'm just going to take that first line on the, on the thing that $45,000 may not be $45,000 and in the general fund moved to a different area. So that's another caveat as well. So.
That is a great explanation and all the more reason why before you adjustments, that you do your homework and get educated on what can move and what can't.
Yep.
Yeah, and I would, I would just encourage the council, I, I know you all have priorities, you know, that you're trying to achieve. You know, please feel free to keep me in the loop. I'm not going to be defensive about this budget. I did my best to bring you something that's, I think, balanced, sustainable and you know, based on all the feedback I get, I think, best for the city. But I, I sincerely mean it. I'm here to help you accomplish anything you would like to see accomplished. There might be other information that you might not be aware of or considerations you want to give to this. You know, historically, the council hasn't gotten into, you know, reams of paper and pens and paper and line items. I, I think that can, that can pull us in a, a difficult direction if we get to that level. So I think frequent early open communication about concerns, priorities, directions is the best way to approach it. So with that, yeah, sleep on it, digest it, ask lots of questions. We're here to help.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask one last question here? And this would be for Sarah, I believe. With our, I'm sorry, I don't know the technical nomenclature of our employee survey classification that we just got finished with.
Compensation and compensation.
Thank you. Are those savings, are we seeing any savings that we are getting through that? Are, are those already accounted for in this budget?
There, there weren't savings.
There weren't, okay. So where, so I guess where, where did it put us at?
So 100% or the recommendations that they have given to us to do, we were able to fully implement into the budget. Inside there is a tab. I don't have it up there now. But in, inside of your thing, there is a personnel changes that has a new, that has a new grade chart of where the new people land at in there. I think the entire study was sent to you guys. So you guys have all of that. I would say if you have any questions on that, talk to Cheryl because she's been inside that and out for months now.
I want to say, was the net impact about a hundred and change on the small side of 100?
That's just the salaries. And you got benefits.
Yeah, right, right.
And then just as a word of caution on any discussion regarding the, the study, there cannot be any conversation in a public meeting about a person specific related to that study or salaries or any conversation that could, would assist the public in figuring out who you're talking about. If you have any questions that are related to the job study and how that relates to personnel, I would suggest you request an executive session.
Thank you.
Yeah, we got it.
Yeah, and, and just to put a, a bookend on that, so the, the study recommendation if adopted as budgeted for does not include a COLA because for the vast majority of employees, it does move them up a little bit and gives them potential during their, their annual performance review. So that was sort of one of the trade-offs of moving every, the most people to a different grade and step is that they wouldn't see a COLA this year. So it's kind of incorporated in there. It does not treat everyone exactly equally. We've been working, Cheryl's been working very late and very hard to try to rectify and, and come up with a, a good balance there. I think, I think we're about there.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Duquette.
So if, if a department can save money, that money has to stay in that department.
No, no, there's basically three, three, let's call it three buckets. Is that safe to say? No. Oh, so any, any particular position, depending on the department, may be funded in part through the water utility, part through the sewer utility, part through general fund or other, other revenues such as permit fees and things to that effect. So you, yeah, you can't look at a, a position or a salary.
I'm not worried about, I wasn't worried about people.
Well, you can't look at a salary line item and assume that you can take something out.
That wasn't what I was thinking either. If, if, if a department could slim down on something, does the money saved have to stay in that department? Like saying no.
There's not, but you have general fund departments.
That's the same thing.
Waterfunds has to stay.
Waterfund has to stay.
And sewer has to stay. But general fund can move all of them.
General fund can move, thank you.
This is probably the best sheet for you to look at. And it shows you the webcams, the expenditures and the color where the money's coming from.
Okay, I have looked at it so many times. I will look at it some more.
Yeah, and we're here to help you. I want you to have all the, yes, all the answers you need.
Okay.
This is your budget at this point.
Okay. Good.
In fact, technically, I, I could, I could show up in, in August and have you just finish this, so. It is truly your budget at this point. I've done my part with Sarah's and everyone's help. And it, I think it's a good budget, but we'll let you discuss that. With that, I'd entertain a moment, a motion to adjourn. If there's no further business that I'm missing here. May I just double check? Yes, yeah, yeah. Was that a motion from?
Yes.
Motion is second to adjourn, all in favor?
All right.
823. Thanks, everyone.